Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And I'll be covering a few points about our remote participation procedures in just a moment. And also, please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. I also need to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. It's record the meeting, but you do need to notify us. I'll give you a few seconds. No one else is recording. So before I go over the points, I just want to ask that if you are, whether you're connected by computer or by telephone, would everyone who's not recognized by the chair not speaking, would you mute microphones and also disable your videos? Except, of course, for the Planning Board members, you should leave your videos on throughout the meeting. But if everyone would kindly mute your microphones, that helps with the clarity of the broadcast. So this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 1-65235141 pound. That's 1-65235141 pound. You can also join the meeting for remote participation online using Microsoft Teams through the link in the agenda that's posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And I will also mention that in accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or item or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. And then just a few procedural steps regarding our remote participation receipt procedure. I'll start off with a roll call of all board members. Once the planning board has discussed any item on the agenda, I will ask by the chair, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking. And we do want to ask you if you can repeat your last name and also the last four digits of your phone number for identification purposes. Also, I will mention that all votes will taken by the planning board would be taken by roll call vote. And at the end of the meeting, we'll close the meeting with a verbal confirmation and we'll note the time of adjournment. So let's do the roll call of all board members. Let's begin. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, present.
And Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, present.
And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, present.
Thank you. And Bob Wertschafter said he would be a little late, but Bob Wertschafter, have you joined us yet? So Bob hasn't arrived, but he should be here shortly. Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, present.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. All right. So before we begin, I'll ask if any board member has to recuse themselves from any matter on our agenda tonight.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin?
Yes.
I was not present for the November 8th meeting, so I have to abstain from any approval of the minutes.
All right, that's, that's perfectly fine. Any other recusals? All right. So let's go to our first agenda item, which is the, which are the minutes for November 8th. And I'll just ask if anyone, any board members has any changes, amendments, additions, corrections? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 8th?
Art Spru, make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Bob Dubus will second it.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
And Tom, you'll, you, you can abstain. I'll call on you and you can abstain.
Tom Gagin abstain.
All right. And Warren, I have you also listed as absent. Do you wish to abstain?
I abstain.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, I approve.
And Bob Wertschafter is not here? Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. And I think we did have a quorum of votes on that. So the minutes for November 8th are approved. Second item on our agenda is a continuation of a public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan review for 79 Forest Beach Road. And this is a continuation from November 8th. And let's see, do we have, we had a site visit with some additional information? And do I have a presenter? Thad, do you want to present what's been done?
Good afternoon, Thad Aldridge, the Southeast. Jamie Norcross, he may be available, he may be unavailable.
I do see, I did.
So. I don't know. Absolutely. Representing Alan Perrault, Alan and Jim Perrault. We've had two onsite visits, a number of meetings, and we're just looking for a two-lot subdivision here. We're proposing a shared driveway, which is commonplace for the, for the planning board to promote just about every two-lot subdivision that goes in there with a panhandle and the lot in the rear. And typically, those are done with a shared driveway. This is a different configuration where we're proposing the frontage on a different road and an alternative access to get to the subject property. The planning board has done it before. And it is permitted if we do it under approval required, which we are. And if we were doing this under an A and R, then it would be a little more difficult for approval. Since last time, I have provided a better outline of the entire drainage area. A low point within Bobby's Lane is the source or the, the ending point for about 18 acres worth of area draining to it. Thanks to the sandy soils in South Chatham, not all the water makes it there. Otherwise, it'd be a pond and not a road. Very good. Thank you, Ally. I was pretty shocked to see that it was that much area. I knew it would be a, a large area. So from there, we've isolated two areas where we're proposing drainage. There are proposed improvements for the shared driveway. And that will go to a bio-retention basin with an under-drain to accommodate the, the surge of flow during a hundred-year storm event. And then in the low area in Bobby's Lane, after the last site visit, I felt we were in agreement, we're going to pave the end of the road, not paving a turning T onto the subject property. We're just going to loam and save that. We're going to add a catch basin, and we've increased it to six four-by-four chambers to take care of a substantial amount of the runoff generated in the area, which a de minimis amount of that or minuscule amount of it is caused by the subject property. So this is in lieu of building a driveway down there. Obviously, if we built a driveway to get from Bobby's up to the developable portion, the developable portion of the lot, we would be taking down a number of trees that most of the planning board members expressed they'd rather not take down the trees. So the proposal, as we have it, minimizes the number of trees to come down. The neighbors are all in strong support. We have drainage improvements that better the situation out there. And we're happy to take questions with the hope of moving this forward and finishing it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Thad. And Jamie, did you want to present any more of the new information in response to the board's requests? Otherwise, I will proceed to read new correspondence and then we'll go to questions from the board.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I think Thad covered the, the main points that were changes as a result of the previous definitive meeting in September and then the onsite. I think hopefully these addresses, address concerns that were raised by planning board members as well as Tom Temple during that meeting. At least that was the, that was the goal with the revisions that you see on these plans and the, and the improved drainage that's been proposed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes. So I do have some new correspondence that I should read before we go to comments and questions by the board. And this is from Mitchell Fishman. And I will just read the letter, and I hope you forgive me. I have to read it off of the same device that, where I'm also seeing the meeting, so I may come on and off video. So this is from Mr. Fishman. This letter is to provide updated supplemental information to my public testimony at the September 27th publicly on the above-proposed subdivision plan proposal. My wife and I own a residence at 34 Bobby's Lane in South Chatham and are abutters to the South Chatham tennis, pickleball, basketball courts and playground and to the new lot of the proposed 79 Forest Beach Road subdivision plan being considered by the planning board. As we have stated in our previous letter to the planning board dated September 30th, 2021, a drainage solution that benefits the petitioner and local partners would seem to be the best solution. And we encourage the planning board to support the revisions identified below that we understand are a part of the revised subdivision plan and adjacent Bobby Lane drainage proposal being reviewed by the planning department. I have been in contact with the petitioner, Alan Perrault, who has advised that the drainage engineering drawings for the proposed subdivision plan have been modified to include the following. One, on the Forest Beach roadside, the new driveway easement will be finished as a stone surface that will drain to a newly constructed grass retention area. Two, the capacity of the below-ground modular retention structures will tie into a new catch basin in Bobby's Lane at the base of Judy's Lane, which will have doubled capacity. Three, the asphalt area previously depicted on the initial definitive subdivision plan within the bounds of the new Lot 4, where it fronts on Bobby's Lane, will be replaced with loam and grass with an asphalt berm edge so as to not add to the existing runoff in this area. Four, the only asphalt area now proposed is limited to the area of Bobby's Lane at the base of Judy's Lane, where it can most effectively capture existing runoff without adding to it. And five, the areas of Bobby's Lane immediately adjacent to the newly paved section at both ends will be excavated to a depth of 12 inches and replaced with a prescribed and compacted fill and topped with stone, extending to my driveway at 34 Bobby's Lane and thereby helping to alleviate puddling in Bobby's Lane and the approach to the town courts. I look forward to hearing back from the planning board on progress towards reaching this mutually acceptable drainage solution and hope to be available at the planning board meeting to answer questions you may have. And this is from Mitchell Fishman, who owns property at 34 Bobby's Lane in South Chatham. So again, just before we go to questions from the board, I do want to mention, go over the referral responses. We may have already reviewed these previously in this public hearing, but I'll just go through them again. From Zoning Board of Appeals and HB Decent, there's no approval required. The application was reviewed by the Fire Department, and the Fire Department has no issues with the proposal. We have not received a response from Police Department or Traffic Safety Committee. We have not received a response from Department of Natural Resources. We have not received, although Mr. Temple was present at one of our site visits, we have not received his evaluation and his response from the Department of Public Works. Conservation Commission is not applicable to this property. And the Board of Health reviewed the proposed subdivision on September 13th and recommended approval. So with that review of new information, let's go to board questions and comments for the applicant or for Thad or for Jamie. Oh, and yes, I see that Katie Donovan has raised her hand. I'm sorry, did I forget something, Katie?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I, if I could, this was in the board's packet, but just this was a, an email from Fire Chief Dave DiPosquale. And he's, we had a meeting regarding the, the project site with the Deputy Police Chief Mike Anderson and Building Commissioner Jay Briggs. And so based on that, Deputy, I'm sorry, Chief DiPosquale said in his email, Katie, thank you for the meeting today regarding the subdivision plan for Forest Beach Road slash Bobby's Lane. As a result of the meeting, I have a couple of items I would like to see addressed. The street numbers, when assigned, must be displayed out at Forest Beach Road for both houses. And the driveway should be free of fences or walls on the east side of the new lot so it can accommodate a Chatham Fire Department ladder truck. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that all members had seen that and that it was right into the record.
Great. Thank you very much. Sorry that I omitted that. Great. So let's go to the board comments and questions. Art, can we start with you?
Yes, this is Art Spru. Thad, the, the two drawings that I received, the large print ones said two of three and three of three. Is the drawing one of three, the, where you showed the dimensions of the lots and the split up of the subdivision?
Yes, drawing one of three hasn't changed throughout this process. We've just been talking about utilities and driveways.
Okay, I just want to understand what's the complete package plans. All right. So the first thing I wanted to go over was the access off of Forest Beach Road. When we were out there for the site visit, it was my understanding that there was a, there was a couple of stakes out there showing the alignment of what the road would be. And there was a stake at the edge of the road and where it was going to be burned up with some grading. There was realignments that were shown in that. I'm seeing no realignment on any plan that you've submitted. So I want to understand, where is the realignment going?
So on both sheets two and three, there is additional stone being proposed on the north side of that road. And that's upwards to four feet. Ally, do you have the other plan?
Which one are you, sorry?
No, that's quite all right.
Is it this? Which one are you talking about?
There is one more.
Number four?
So none of the drainage report, but in the other. And if you don't mind, I can take over the screen and show it.
Sure. Yep, I'll stop sharing.
Okay, Ally, good to see you back. This is Bob. I'm on.
Hey, Bob. It's nice to talk to you.
So the existing driveway comes through here, and the proposed would extend further, providing a minimum of 12 feet in width.
Okay, I, I didn't see any information of what that cross-section was and what it was going to consist of and its location. Part of my concern of what you're showing there, and it's noted as part of that on your way that's accessed off of Forest Beach Road, is you have an undefined width. That, that to me is problematic. If there is an easement there, if you haven't defined it, I'd like to see you go back and define that easement. And then the access roadway needs to be within that easement, not outside of it, not on private property. So I'm seeing a lot of the roadway outside of the easement.
And I appreciate that, but the roadway exists where it is. The land court has not defined the width of the old carriageway. The abouter is in agreement with the location. And we didn't want to ask for more in case things move in the future.
Well, regardless of what was done previously, you're filing for a new subdivision. That subdivision is supposed to be complying with our rules and regulations. We call for a 33-foot right-of-way and then a certain criteria for the actual road. Those, you know, we've been in discussions with. I think the roadway, whatever you put in there, regardless of what it was before, because it was just a driveway, it wasn't a road as it is being defined under Subdivision Control Law, needs to be within that right-of-way limit. So I think there has to be an adjustment, a more of an adjustment than what you're showing there.
Our 33-foot wide road that we're requesting is the stub road coming off of Bobby's Lane. And we've requested a waiver for the alternative access to share the driveway. I know that we came in with a preliminary plan showing 33 feet and completely stripping out this first section that you yourself were not overly enamored with.
I, I wasn't enamored with it because you weren't defining what was actually going to happen there, which was going to be removing all the trees. That was the only reason why. But if you're going to put an access road in there, you got to remember that parcel A goes all the way back to the Donovan property. There could be an extension of that in the future to provide circulation if that Donovan property is developed. So it's not going to be just a driveway. It's going to be considered a legitimate access, which, which parcel A does define that by subdivision control.
And I'm sorry, the Donovan property has no rights in this property. So there's no way for an access to continue forward based upon Donovan development unless they were to gain those rights.
Okay.
I know that the assessor's map is a bit confused because once upon a time, there was a road defined out here, out to Donovan's. That was withdrawn. That was expunged. A different road layout was put in further to the north. That was expunged. And a 20-foot strip was conveyed to the Seltzers, who owned the property before. And then two lots were created to the north rather than four. But at no point in time were Donovan's given rights over this property to be able to, or Donovan's predecessor entitled Cyrus Baker. They were never given rights over this property to access their own land. And given the topography, it would be, be a fairly steep drive.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me go through my comments in here, and then we can come back and circle back on them. One, there is no definition on any dimensions in the layout. definition on any dimensions in the layout of the roadways. Whether it was on the access from Forest Beach Road or on Bobby's Lane, I see no dimensions on widths and lengths of the construction. That needs to be put out there. That's a part of what we call for in our rules and regulations to show all that information. If, we also ask for if you're going to have an access like this, it's, it's an access point. We call for a cul-de-sac, a T or an L, right? And you're showing something, but it doesn't show that it has an easement associated with it. And I think that has to be clearly defined on there. There's certain waivers that you haven't requested that I think you have to do request beyond the ones that you have. One, the thirty-three foot right-of-way, two, the eighteen foot roadway width. The LRT versus the cul-de-sac. Sunk distances, the long Forest Beach Road, you're asking for waivers for that. Trees, replacement trees. We call for having trees, sixty-foot intervals on each side of the road. You need to call for a waiver for that. And these all should be shown on the drawings to define that if we have made a definitive finding on that as a board, that we're waiving that. I'm concerned about the adequacy of access though. And I think that that has to be the biggest issue that needs to be resolved on this. And I'm not seeing that with what I'm seeing on this drawing right now. Couple other things on some of the details. The infiltration galley that you're showing down at Bobby's Lane. The detail is not showing the limits and dimensioning on the stones that are, that has been used around the galleys, right? Is it four feet? Is it on all four sides and the bottom? Showing no details associated with that. The bio-retention basin, you're not showing any, you call out a thousand square feet, but you don't have the dimensions for it. What is it? Is it, is it twenty by fifty? Is it twenty-five by forty? What, put some dimensions on these drawings so we know what is being built and what is being constructed. The roadway down at Bobby's Lane, what part is asphalt? What's the width of it? What part is gravel stone? I'm not seeing what is listed in Mr. Mitchell Fishman's, Mitchell Fishman's item number five in his letter. He's talking about the gravel is going to be placed all the way to his driveway. I'm not seeing anything on the plan that shows that. All of this information needs to be noted on the plan so that when we approve it and we go out there to inspect it, that we can verify that the work is being done according to the plan. But if it's not shown on the plan, then there's not necessarily any that's going to get done. And I think the, the last item that I have is on the covenant. Katie, what I would do is I would add the same two conditions that we noted on Annabelle Lane subdivision to the covenant. And there was a question of whether a covenant should be drafted on this. And I would say absolutely, yes, we would need to have a covenant so that the work is verified and being done before lots are released. That's all I have for the, for this initial discussion, Catherine.
Okay. Arthur. And Arthur, may I just ask you to clarify something? So we talked about the adequacy of access and requesting a waiver for the thirty-three feet right-of-way and the eighteen foot road width for the, for the road coming off of Forest Beach.
Right.
So are you comfortable? I'm just, you know, do you want to see that road widened? Or are you comfortable with granting a waiver?
Well, I would say a waiver from the eighteen feet, what we wave it down to would be something that the board members should discuss. But it's providing more than driveway access to a single property. So that I view this, and if emergency vehicles have to get in there, I would say it needs to be more than, more than twelve feet, maybe fourteen feet, maybe sixteen feet. I would like to hear from some of the other board members on it.
Clarifying that. So Tom Gagan.
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagan. I remember way back in our first site visit, historically with this property, that there were concerns from this board member and perhaps others about what we were inadvertently creating here, which may be somewhat troublesome in the future for this board and for the town. Are we creating two panhandle lots? And I'd like to have some discussion with the other board members about the wisdom of this. And is there enough information here that we feel as a board comfortable that it's not going to be an issue for this board in the future?
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, if you approved the air driveways before and you're waiting on it here, it's not an issue.
And Madam Chair, I may, Mr. Gagan, I also point out, it's not, I mean, we are creating frontage on Bobby's Lane as part of this proposal down at the bottom there. So that is the legal access and legal frontage for the new lot. So it's not two panhandle lots from a legal perspective. I understand the primary access for both lots that we are proposing is off of Forest Beach as opposed to having a driveway off of Bobby's Lane. I think we looked at it from the perspective of what's best for the neighborhood. Yeah, sure, you can put a driveway off of Bobby's that goes up the hill. I think the members that were at the site visit last month and were down the, the bottom there saw, I mean, it's fairly steep. You're going to lose a lot of trees going up there. And I, I think from an impact to the neighborhood, coming off of Forest Beach makes the most sense as opposed to creating a new driveway off of Bobby's Lane. So could they do that? Sure. But what is really gained by that, I guess, is what we're not, we don't really understand. We think this provides the legal frontage that's required and the access is really most beneficial for the neighborhood as a whole.
Tom, does that answer?
Mike, it's an answer, yes. But my concern is that it's clear with any approval of this plan that we're not creating a situation that we're going to have to double back on in the future. If there's enough labeling on this plan to ensure that the specifics of this subdivision are very clear and the conditions under which it's been granted by this board makes it somewhat difficult for someone to duplicate this in the future. That's my only concern, is that we box ourselves in as a board and have to backtrack and pedal water sometime in the future. I think what Arthur Spru is pointing out is that the more definition there is in this plan, and that includes measurements and, and detail that this board will be able to survive a situation in the future that would not replicate what we might wind up with is a, a double hammerhead lot. That's my only concern.
Let me ask Katie Donovan if you have a comment on this because I, as I recall, this situation where the access is actually different from the frontage on a subdivision lot is something that has been done before in Chatham. As I recall, we've, in one of our discussions, we covered that.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Katie Donovan. We, we did discuss, I, I did have conversations with both the, as I said, the Fire Chief, the Deputy Police Chief and the Building Commissioner regarding concerns about accessing a property from a different location than their frontage. I also reached out to other planners in Massachusetts just to make sure that there was no, nothing through mass state law, mass general laws that would not allow for a property to be accessed in another location other than their legal frontage. And there are technically, there are no requirements. Typically, if a community does not allow such, they would put it in their zoning regulations. And we do not have any such regulation in our zoning bylaw. And so therefore, I believe, and I, I can't speak specifically, but I believe that there have been other locations where properties have been accessed through other means or other roadways other than their technical legal frontage. If I'm watching the screen, I believe that that is pulling up an example of that, just to show that it has been done in Chatham in the past.
Okay, thank you.
These are two lots that were proposed, approved by the planning board with a twelve-foot driveway. The twelve-foot driveway is a shared driveway to service four lots, but only three use it. The legal frontage for seven and eleven are along Route twenty-eight, which was blocked off by a landscaping berm.
Okay. Thank you, Thad. And Katie. So did you have their concerns or questions? I'll move on to Warren if, if you're.
Did you ask me, Tom Gagan, if I'm finished?
Yes.
If, if we are convinced that this is not going to create an issue and there's no precedence that we're going to have to follow up in the future, then that would satisfy me. I don't, I understand the topography to the rear of the second lot creates a bigger issue. I just don't want this to come back sometime and have us not have, covered ourselves and understand what we'll be granting. Thank you.
Okay, Warren. Questions on the new plans with revisions or comments?
Yes, just a couple. Mostly for clarification. There's been so many revisions and discussions, meetings, site visits and so on. The first comment that I have is that during my site visit, it was the Water Department, I believe, perhaps building, that made the comment that their preference would be to put the water main, eight-inch water main a loop all the way from Forest, Forest Beach down to Bobby's Lane. That is not what is being proposed. And I just want to make certain that, that there was no further discussion on that point and that the decision is what it is for a reason that I'd be interested in hearing.
Certainly. When staff, Mr. Norcross, Mr. Perrott, myself, had a meeting quite a while ago about this, there was the question of the loop. And at that time, the DPW Director felt that a two-inch main would be satisfactory to tie into the two-inch main located within Bobby's Lane. At the onsite, he said he wanted an eight-inch main, and we did talk about the loop. It's an onerous cost to install that much water main for such a little return. And so we returned with an eight-inch water main coming down to where the driveway for the second lot turns with a hydrant and also a stub left behind for the Water Department to be able to extend that main at such time they choose to. An easement would be left behind for the Water Department to be able to install that main. And currently, Bobby's Lane only has a two-inch main anyhow. So it would be at such time as when the Water Department would upgrade that main as well or later.
All right. So the, the conclusion of the experts is, notwithstanding the comments about the flexibility, improvement water quality, water pressure and so on, if there were a loop, the decision is that that is not something that the town wishes to pursue.
Oh, it's something that the town can certainly pursue in the future.
Okay. Well, the time, of course, to do it would be now if you're going to do it, so. But the decision is not to pursue that interest at the moment, right? There's no sure input from the Building Department. Just want to clarify, that's all. I don't have a speaking that issue. Also, I was raised previously that the roadwork that's being proposed, I'll call it roadwork on Bobby's Lane, isn't really well-defined on the, on the, on the plan. Bobby's Lane is a public road, is it not?
It is a private way.
It's a private way. Okay.
Where the public has a right of access to get to the tennis court.
Okay. However, it is now being undertaken by the applicant, I take it, to do the road improvements on the private way?
The applicant has a right of way in the private way.
No, what I mean is it's the applicant who is actually arranging for and paying for the road improvements with the consent and of the neighbors?
Well, he doesn't, well, he apparently has the consent of several neighbors. Technically, with the right-of-way, he wouldn't be required to have that.
Okay.
Well, I think that, sorry, the question is, he, he's taking, undertaking the work that's shown on the plan, the applicant is, in terms of those road improvements.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, for, for sake of my own education and clarity, you know, in the future, if there's something wrong with the roadwork, it's, whose, whose fault is it, quote unquote? It's the applicant.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, if he, in terms of the drainage and everything else that he's constructing, that's correct.
And I believe that the latest correspondence does confirm that the proposed changes that to the drainage on Bobby's Lane is deemed satisfactory to all of the neighbors who have indicated an interest in this issue. And in your opinion, it's going to be adequate to essentially handle all of the runoff.
By far, no. This stormwater system is designed specifically for Bobby's Lane from the high point in the road to the end of the road. The additional flows coming from the town tennis courts, the paving on Judy's Injention and the other runoff sources from Abutters during a substantial storm event will overwhelm this system.
Okay, and that's well-understood by all.
I mean, that's the problem that they have out there today. No drainage and a lot of runoff sources going to Low Point. This will better the situation, but it is not going to fix it.
Okay, and, and if, if it's your understanding that that is well-understood by the, the Abutters.
If it's not, I'm being very clear right now. And in the drainage report, I was completely equally as clear. Dan was hopefully equally as clear. This is why we've proposed a capped drainage pipe underneath the paved section of road to be left there so that if somebody chooses to expand the system, they'll be able to without digging up the road.
All right. I don't have any further questions. I just wanted a little clarity on those points since I was unclear, having heard everything. So that's all for me.
Okay, thank you, Warren. And Bob Dubus.
Hi, Bob Dubus here. Listen, I have some issues with the clarity of the width of the road coming off of Forest Beach. That's a lot of stuff going down that area that's not very well-defined. I also, when we first came into this, was noticing that the grade change on the banking on the, oh God, it's a, say, the north side would, would be quite a drop. There's no, there's no shoulder. I think we're intruding on the easement. The house on the corner is saying it's okay, but when he passes and somebody else buys that, I have a concern about that. I also have a concern that a fire engine, if you read it, it said a ladder truck could turn around down there. I don't believe that can happen. And I don't think that cedar tree on the entrance can stay there trying to get a fire truck in and out of there. The other concern I have is that The other concern I have is that by his right-of-way is on Bobby's Lane. But his driveway is, wants to be on Forest Beach, which means that his address will be Forest Beach, which means that we have, in my opinion, we have two panhandle lots there. Yes, he has frontage on Bobby's Lane, but his address will be Forest Beach. And by being that address, it means that we've created two, two lots on that one area. And I'm, I'm, I think we're setting precedent that that might be a little bit much. As, in being in the construction, I see no reason not to have his driveway off Bobby's Lane. It's not that steep. He's going to cut trees down, yes, but they're selectively cut and can be dealt with properly. If he wanted later to have a driveway on the top, that's fine. But if he doesn't have his driveway on Bobby's Lane, his address will, will make it so that it seems to be two panhandle lots on one little road, which is very well-defined that much. I'm a little nervous about that. I would say a minimum, minimum of 14 feet for a fire truck. That's what they like to see, or an ambulance. And I see no turnaround. So I just think you're trying to push too much into the Forest Beach area, when in fact, since your frontage is off Bobby's Lane, it, your driveway should be off Bobby's Lane. And if, if your neighbor, when you sell it, decides to let you have a road or an access, that's fine. I just think you're, you're pushing yourself into making us make a decision on two panhandle lots that are, that are going to come back at us. So I, I'm, I'm not in favor of this at all. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Bob Borchafter.
Catherine, I don't have anything else to add to what's already been said.
Okay, thanks. Roger Griffin. Roger, are you muted?
Not now. I'm, I'm offset. No, I just have a few questions, maybe this one from Katie. I'm just curious, we haven't heard from Tom Temple of the Department of Public Works. Will we, will we do, when, how does that work? When will, will we be hearing back from him before we?
And so I apologize, I did try to reach out to him, Tom, today. He wasn't in the office. We, it just, just due to, you know, just different things going, there's been, you know, with the storm we had a few weeks ago, we weren't able to get the plans until late from the engineer, and I, I don't know what Tom's schedule was last week, but we did not receive plans from him. I did, you know, we can certainly reach out and see if he would make comments, should the applicant wish to.
Yeah, only because I think, you know, the day that we had the second tour, he had some concerns, and I respect what he, you know, his thoughts, and he's very good at what he does, and I would like to have really, you know, had, you know, see what, what, what he's, you know, what his opinions are. I guess the thing is, you know, I'm not going to be redundant, but I guess somebody, one of the things that really stuck out with me, and I've had experience with this, having construction in a cul-de-sac and all this baloney, but, you know, I think the thing is, on a pri, I guess I, I see Bobby's Way is a private way, and on a private way, Butters changed, and when the Butters changed, they do become, they could become the town's problem. So I know we say there aren't any issues, but, you know, none of us live forever. And if there are any problems with the Butters going down the road, it'll be, you know, that's, that's when it probably could come back on, on the town of Chatham. I guess the other thing I saw is on the tree replacements, is removing trees. And, and again, this is not, this is just a general thing. This is just, sometimes I feel like, over the past, what I've been exposed to, sometimes when we maybe the tree replaced, planting of trees, replacement trees, somehow it always seems to get lost. And like to maybe see, we could probably work a little better at maybe making sure that, you know, maybe that's, you know, before this is approved, that we do make sure that we've, we're comfortable, that we've really got that, I guess, under control and not just sort of like iffy. It's there, but it's not there, and we just never seem to get to it. And I always feel, I mean, we look back at some other things, you say, talk poppers, and it just doesn't seem like we really have a, not to say we get it wrong, but we didn't get it as right as I think I, that we probably would like to have it done. And I thought it's something, and I guess even the street, where they think, I guess I do wonder with the turnaround of a, a fire trucks. I do have a concern. I guess I'm still kind of concerned that we're not really, not saying we're quite there yet, but I'd like to see that we have a better, maybe a better handle on that. I don't know whether that's tonight, how we get that done. But other than that, that, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
May I ask, what is the requirement for tree replacement for a subdivision?
Arthur, I'm going to let you answer that question.
Well, when we have a new roadway, we ask for trees at 60, no, maximum 60-foot intervals on both sides of the roadway. Now, this is in the neighborhood of a couple, 300 feet long, when you go from one end to the other. You could end up with anywhere between four to six trees on here. But you're also looking at ripping out a lot of the old trees and, and also not providing a buffer strip, which is another criteria that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Sill.
So, I, I would say, there's a judgment call that we would make as board members of how to replace what is being removed and how to come up with the alternative for the spacing for an entrance roadway on a subdivision road, which calls for 60-foot spacing on trees on both sides. But some trees need to be replaced for the ones that are being removed, and we should define where that is.
And where is that in the regulations? Because I'm having a hard time finding it.
If you give me a minute, I can find it.
All, that be all right?
I've got it, and just a minute, I'm still looking.
Okay.
Okay, it's on page 16 of our regulations. Item 10, no, item 11. Trees shall be planted at 60 feet or less intervals on both sides of all streets unless specifically waived. Variety location, and this is falls underneath section five, required improvements underneath the.
So we'll be happy to plant trees at such an interval or the equivalent thereof.
Right. And I, and I think that's what Roger was getting at, is, is we should, we should look at what is the replacement component? Because there are going to be trees removed, and we should look at what is an appropriate replacement.
There's nothing in the regs to require replacement, and you'll see, I have a screenshot, it is the 2010 aerials. I mean, we're talking about a lot that has a couple hundred trees. Where can you plant more trees on this lot in an appropriate location along with a house? Along with a driveway that's now 14 feet, along with shoulders, along with, it, it can't happen. You either reduce the requirements so that you can save the trees, or you maintain the requirements and we cut down trees.
Madam Chair, this is Jamie Norcross again. I think one thing that would be helpful for us is, is determining which access the board could see itself approving in terms of, is there a variation on Forest Beach that majority of the members find that they could accept? If it sounds like it may need to be tweaked, but if it's widened and a more distinct profile is provided with the plan, is that something that board members are, are willing to agree to? Or are board members feeling that we have to create driveway access off of Bobby's Lane for that second lot? Because that's really, I, I think, the most important issue at, at, at this juncture, at least for the planning purposes.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. I agree with you completely. I think that's what we need to determine as a board exactly. Because I think overall with this plan, we're trying to make something work that doesn't exactly work yet. And, you know, so we have this turnaround over on Bobby's Lane that we, that provides the frontage, but it's still problematic, the access is still problematic. So I think that's exactly right, that as a board, we need to decide if we don't have access from Bobby's Lane, could we be satisfied with something changed regarding the access from Forest Beach? So that we feel that we're not having essentially two panhandle lots, and that it's, that we've solved all the problems can. So maybe I'd just like to get a sense of the board. If you feel that we can completely solve all these problems and, and produce something that's satisfactory without creating a driveway from Bobby's Lane? Or do you feel we must create the driveway from Bobby's Lane, the access to the Bobby's Lane? So, Arthur, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, and, and I'll just look at that example that was brought up by Thad. If you take a look at it, it has roadway access around all of those lots from three different roadways. So there really wasn't an issue from the standpoint of emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicles could get to every one of those homes, whether there was a driveway access off of something else or not. In this case, we don't have that situation. And I'll go back to what, what Bob Dubus was saying, is, is that you, if you're going to have your sole access to Lot 6, being off of Forest Beach Road, we better make sure that that access is accessible for emergency vehicles. You're not going to have that with a 12-foot wide driveway access and no turnaround. So this particular situation, because the only access that would be available to Lot 6 would be from, from Forest Beach Road, needs to be adequate. And if you don't have an adequate access in there, then it's not viable. And, and I do agree with some of the other board members about that we are, without, without definitively coming up with a, this access, which is like Nellie's Lane with a cul-de-sac at the end, and the driveway comes off of it, that's, that's different. We're not providing that access. The applicant is looking for an, an extended driveway and almost a, a second, what appears to be a second panhandle lot, and I think that is a problem. I think it's a precedent, and it's going to be tough for us to walk away from this in the future if, if others come, come before us on it. So I'm leaning that you either got to do it right, or you make the access off of Bobby's Lane, as, as Bob Dubus was suggesting.
Okay, great. And Tom Gagin? Would you, do you feel that we can create adequate, or that adequate access can be created for speech, or do you prefer that we try a redesign with the access from Bobby's Lane?
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, before I answer, I saw Ally Sabatino stand up. Would you recognize her, please?
Absolutely. I don't see the hands so well, so I apologize. Ally, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to have a little bit of background from when we first originally looked at the pre-application a, a long time ago at this point. I think that we had discussed, because it was originally proposed as an easement off Forest Beach Road, access for both of the lots. We were uncomfortable with that because of that precedent that it could create. So we spoke with the applicant about creating this frontage along Bobby's Lane, which we thought was an acceptable kind of compromise potentially for not creating that precedent of having actually an easement coming off of Forest Beach for the access. We, when I was in Harwich, just an example, they had a special permit provision that had alternate access, which basically said if you had access off of an area that was not your frontage, you had to get a special permit to do that. But we don't have that requirement in Chatham. So I just wanted to put that out for the board, just as kind of a follow-up. It is obviously up to the board, but I just wanted to say that. And I did also want to weigh in just for a second on the tree issue. Obviously, we do have that section in the bylaw about planting trees on roadways. But we also do, on page 13 of our rules and regs, have a section about trees. It doesn't say about replacing the trees on the lot. But if you don't mind, I could just read it very quickly to you. Is that okay, Catherine?
Absolutely, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So to the fullest extent possible, existing trees shall be preserved by the developer. Special consideration shall be given to the layout of lots and the position of dwellings on the lots to ensure that existing trees during the process of grading lots and roads. Where there's a question as to the desirability of removing a group of trees, which serve to add interest and variety to the proposed subdivision, in order to allow for use of the land or for lots or lot, the board may, after proper investigation, withhold approval of such lot or lots. So that does have a section that we did discuss about trees. It's not specifically replacing the trees, but it does talk about the board being able to discuss removing of trees.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ally. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, Tom Gagin, did you want to weigh in on your opinion of redesign with, with the access being from Bobby's Lane?
Yes, Tom Gagin, Madam Chair. I think we need to do this correctly. I voiced my concerns earlier. I'd like to see this as clean as possible for the future, and that the access should be off Bobby's Lane. If that means that the applicant wishes at some point, time in the future to have the right to pass over the road off of Forest Beach Road, that's a different issue. But if the granting of the permit for the subdivision is that the frontage and access is from Bobby's Lane, I think it's a lot cleaner and clearer for the future.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Warren, you want to weigh in on this issue of access from Forest Beach?
It's a large, I defer to the experts and the civil engineers, but I would perhaps raise the question drainage solution that is now in this proposal might need to be materially changed if the access, the driveway was off Bobby's Lane, and you had a significant reduction of trees on the slope, as well as the roadway in terms of contributing to the runoff. But that comment aside, I think I, I will defer to the experts on this one.
Okay, thank you, Warren. And Bob Dubus, if you'd like to restate it, but I understand you would like to see that the driveway be these lane. Do you want to make any further?
Yeah, I would like to see it off of Bobby's Lane, and, and what that would do is eliminate a lot of the utilities and money that's going to go into the utilities off of Forest Beach Road. And if, if some later date, he wants to have an access on the top, there's, there's no problem. You, you can keep it exactly the way it is today, without any worries about any trees or any, anything up on that area, and concentrate on giving himself a, a nice driveway and all those utilities from down below. I mean, I'm sure that he could get, if gas isn't available down there, he could pull gas off of Wood, Forest Beach Road. He could pull his water, if it's, if, if, if it's only to him, he could pull his water off of there and his electricity off of there. There's nothing stopping him from having his utilities there. It's the access in, in the address that's very important. If his address is Bobby's Lane, then he's not, he doesn't have a panhandle lot, on a panhandle lot. And, and the trees that he cuts down to make it, most people cut a lot. And and the trees that he cuts down to make it, most people cut a lot of trees down in their lots when they build, so that the trees don't fall in the houses. And the driveway is a driveway. You have to take trees out. It's it's there's many, many places you can go and see. It's not that really that steep. So that's basically what I have to say.
Madam Chair, Jamie Norcross again, if I may speak.
Please go ahead, Jamie.
See, I guess we're, yeah, I know the Peralta feeling like they're sort of stuck in the middle here a bit in terms of the boards expressed concern regarding drainage and and lost vegetation. And so creating the access off of Bobby's is just going to exacerbate those issues, as Mr. Chain pointed out. And so when members were speaking earlier, it seemed as if a some sort of widened access off of Forest Beach would help folks see this in a in a more positive light. I think even Bob had mentioned that, you know, if it was widened to 14 feet, then it's, you know, it's closer to your sort of standard subdivision roadway. Is that something that we can still approach? I think that, again, from a solution of bettering the property from a drainage and environmental standpoint, as well as we have neighbors at the bottom on on Bobby's who prefer essentially leaving as close to as is as you can with the drainage improvements. And we have neighbors at the top, Mrs. Daley and 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 the other side of the way, who are in favor of the proposal and they like it. So I think by forcing the applicant to access off of Bobby's is creating potential issues with drainage and environmental issues. It's also creating a situation where he might have some unhappy neighbors down there.
Madam Chairperson, this is Alan Peral. Would I be able to speak for a second?
Um, yes, go ahead, Mr. Pearl.
Okay, I fully appreciate the position the board is in. I was a former planning board member myself. And like Ally, I was actually a planner in the past. So I I fully appreciate this, but I'd kind of like to reiterate what Jamie just said. I'm going to live here. So I have relationships, and I'm the one that reached out to Mr. Fishman and the Shays, and Mr. Kelsey and I have become very friendly, and Carol Daley. So they're going to be my neighbors. So if anything, I've heard on the side of trying to be cooperative with my neighbors. I fully appreciate not setting precedent. But I think as even Ally can confirm, the it's actually the staff that pushed us to at least show we could create legal frontage down on Bobby's Lane, because in the preliminary, we didn't even do so. So I still think that there is something, maybe Bob Dubus wouldn't agree with me, but that we could improve the the access coming in off of Forest Beach, have it way better defined, have the utilities and profiles that Mr. Spru would like to see, and I think Mr. Dubus would as well. And we're certainly open to that. But I would hate to lose the ground I've made with my neighbors down at Bobby's Lane. And I walk my dog through there all the time, and I understand the existing condition. And by suddenly, you may remember, Madam Chairperson, that it was the DPW director who thought that that scaling that hill, that's a 13% to 14% grade. Yes, it can be done. But there are more substantial trees at the bottom of it, and that's going to really affect a lot, a lot more. And as one of the members mentioned, now we're really increasing the amount of drainage needed. If you're aware of where Forest Bluff is at the end of Forest Beach Road, I walk that area all the time, too. When you have a heavy rain event, that's about a pitch of 13% to 14%. And you create washouts. So I'd like to see if we could really focus on something and maybe just draft something and have Thad work with the staff, with Ally or Katie, and maybe yourself, Madam Chairperson, and come up with some concepts that may do a better job of addressing some of the Forest Beach issues. And also, just so you know, the Donovan property is no longer owned by the Donovan. Somebody already bought that as a single lot and is and is going to be just building a single-family house there. So those are the issues I want to raise. We want to be cooperative. But I'm going to live here and, you know, and not that that's the reason a board should or shouldn't vote on something. But I don't think you want to pass it over without realizing that this is a significant improvement on what is already a difficult situation. And I don't want to go back to square one and have to say, okay, now we have to quadruple the drainage down there, when I don't think it's really necessary. And I don't know if Mr. Fishman is on or someone else, but that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for the time.
I thank you. I appreciate your comments and Jamie's comments. However, I was in the middle of a process of essentially getting a sense of the board to try to understand where board members, where where our thinking is on this issue. So I want to continue with that. And with everything that's been said, I still want to get a sense of whether we're continuing to look at the Forest Beach access, or whether you want to request a redesign, and let's look at the access coming from Bobby's Lane. And so Bob Wurzhafter, do you want to weigh in on that issue?
Yes, I do. I I'm I'm inclined to agree with the gentleman that just spoke. I do not, I I was getting more and more troubled by the idea that we're going to put a road in that access down on Bobby's Lane when when we've already spoke of all the issues with drainage and and that are already there. Just just to protect ourselves against a precedent that that may not be a precedent. I mean, it it's clearly, it can if we can call Bobby's Lane the frontage, we have access through the other road. If that road is improved, it will be a much more suitable solution. I I honestly don't think I would want any, you know, if if we can't bring this property from Forest Beach Road, I'm questioning whether there is a developable developable piece of property there at all. So I I I was convinced by what the gentleman just said.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And Roger, weigh in on this issue?
Yeah, I guess I tend to agree with the with the with the others, I mean, Tom and and Bob and Warren and that we should, I think we should be pursuing access off of Bobby's Lane.
Bobby's Lane, okay.
Again, I I do also have my concerns with with that as well, because obviously it's on a private, it's on a private lane and things change. Owners do change and, you know, that, you know, views change. But anyway, that's like, that's what I feel. That's what I feel right now.
All right. So and I'll just ask for all the board members who have already, right now, the majority of the board is wanting to request redesign access off of Bobby's Lane. I think you've heard that. And this was not a formal vote. I just polled the board, just to get a sense of the board. Warren didn't go either way, and Bob Wurzhafter favors Forest Beach. But the other members who have weighed in all are leaning in the direction of requesting a redesign from Bobby's Lane.
Chairman, this is Warren. I can make some comments. The I I am of the opinion that if the experts here that have spoken already on the board can be comfortable with access from Forest Beach in terms of defined roadway widths, et cetera, and turnaround space, and essentially not being a panhandle lot, but actually, you know, a road that that I'd be willing to go along with them and say that that's that's perfectly acceptable. But if the issues that have been partially addressed, but certainly not resolved, coming off Forest Beach cannot be resolved, then I would absolutely require that it be Bobby's Lane as the access and including, you know, the sole access.
Right. Thank you, Warren. Again, what I've heard from board members is Arthur, and please, once I go through this, please correct me if you're if you've rethought things. Arthur, Tom, Bob Dubus, and Roger would want to see redesign from Bobby's Lane. And Bob Wurzhafter is wanting to stick with each. And Warren will go with the opinion of the experts. Right now, it seems like the experts are leaning in the direction of Bobby's Lane. And please, board members, if presented you, please correct me. We did not take a formal vote. This is just a sense of the board.
Catherine, this is Art Spru.
Yes, go ahead, Arthur.
My my view was is, as proposed, it's an inadequate access from Forest Beach Road. That was that was in it. If that is the proposal by the applicant, no, then I'm not in favor of both properties being accessed from Forest Beach Road. However, I I did say, just like Bob did, is if you improve that to inadequate access with a T-turnaround at the end, then certainly it could be used for access to both lots five and six. So I think this burden's got to go back to the applicant. They've got to make a choice of do, if you're going to make the access off of Forest Beach Road, you got to make a appropriate access off of there and not try to to do what you're doing here right now. Do it right. And then I will be supportive of that with with the appropriate turnarounds and easements that make sure that it's available for use for emergency vehicles, et cetera. So I I think the burden has to fall on the applicant and their engineer to decide which way that they want to go. It for for my support to be off of Forest Beach Road.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. And I saw Roger's hand was raised.
Yes, yes, I just want to, actually, I want to reiterate what what Art had said, yes, if we could really make any any appropriate changes in Forest Beach Road, because if we can work, if we can work with the applicant, I mean, I want to see that we have. So I think that we want, if we want to take another look at it, I feel the same way as Art, of course you would. We can really do it all right, then, yeah, I I am, I'm supportive.
All right. Tom Gagan, do you want to modify your stance at all or or make any comments?
Tom Gagan, Madam Chair, we we haven't heard from you yet.
Yes, no, you haven't heard from me. Let me go. Let me first ask you and Bob Dubus if you want to make any additional comments or modifications and speak. So my opinion is is I think it's the, it's actually the same that's been said. If you can create robustly adequate access from Forest Beach, I could live with that. But right now, I think we're just it's sort of like that New England saying, you just can't get there from here. You're going to have to compromise something and make it absolutely right. It's still going to look like two panhandle lots. It's still a problem, I think. And I would prefer to see a design that gave access from Bobby's Lane. I think the drainage problems may be able to be solved. I just think that the jury is out on that one. We need to actually see what the design will be and what trees will be removed and how it does potentially affect any additional runoff from the lot and how that will be handled. So I think the jury's out on that one. But right now, I'm just seeing that it's, I'd love to have you solve the problem on Forest Beach, but I'm just not seeing it. Also, I would want to mention to the board and to the applicant that we have not, we haven't received Tom Temple's comments, and I think his comments are absolutely critical for this whole discussion. And even if we weren't having this discussion, I think his comments are critical to our feeling comfortable with this design, whichever way it goes. So I think we do need to have him weigh in on this issue and possibly weigh in on the issue of changing the design to this from and we need to kind of nail it down and get very specific. And in that regard, too, I want to thank Thad for your candor about the, you know, the current plans for the drainage that it it handles. The new drainage, you know, the new situation, the stormwater that's coming off of this lot. But there's, it's still a problematic area, and I appreciate on Bobby's Lane, and I appreciate your clarification on that. So so that's in my opinion. Yes, Tom, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagan, is Jamie still present with us?
I think he is.
Yes, I am, Mr. Jamie.
Jamie, Tom Gagan, I'm wondering if there'd be a way of putting some language in the deed for this lot that would satisfy board members that we weren't creating something that would come back and possibly be part of the Pandora's Box syndrome. If you could think of something that would, again, very much clarify the separation of these lots is not adjoining panhandle lots, that certainly would help me to go along with the idea of not having to have access off of Bobby's Lane. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we can. We can try and put something together for that.
Okay. So again, this is Catherine, and if I could summarize the sense of the board that I'm getting right now, myself included, that I think the board needs to see some redesign and reworking. And I think the board is willing to first look at redesign with access off of Forest Beach, but it has to be very solidly adequate access, clearly adequate access for both lots. And we do need to address that issue. I think, Mr. Gagan, that was a good request. You know, that we're not looking at two panhandles, but, you know, two lots that have adequate access. And if we could see you create that off of Forest Beach, then we may not need to take a look at access off of Bobby's Lane. So I I that's my summary of what I'm hearing from the board. But if board members disagree with that summary, I would love you to speak up. And I know, Bob Dubus, you probably disagree with that summary.
No, Bob Dubus here. No, no, I I don't. If they can show, and I I did say minimum 14 feet is what they usually require for an emergency vehicle to go down. If they can show me that the vehicle can turn around without being in a parking space for the house, I have no problem with that. And they can show me they have legal right-of-way, not just an easement, something that's going to be in forever in in have deeded access on that road with, on the little road there that uh, that was a cot path. And and as far as planting trees, they can plant trees, that's fine, because by the time they get finished putting the utilities in there, there won't be a tree left.
Right.
It's it's going to be devastation for that whole strip. And and I'm wondering, I'm worried about the house on the corner that gave the easement for him to somebody else buying it and rescinding it later on. So I would make sure that that is sewed up tight.
Yeah, the easement runs with the property forever, so there's no issue there. I understand it's undefined in terms of width, but
Well, I I hope so, because it's it's very close to his front door. As a matter of fact, half of it is his driveway to get to his garage. So that's what scares me, that you're infringing upon his driveway immensely. So as long as the Ps and Qs and everything else is tucked up, I don't have a problem with that. But but the way it is now is definitely not not copacetic, in my opinion.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other comments from board members? So I think the direction is clear. We we need to get more information, some redesign. And I think the board is willing to consider access from Road first to see if it can be done and if you can really do it properly and to see if it can be done and if you can really do it properly and, and create adequate access. And, and the plans that you show, you know, need to really be very clear and very specific as Arthur has pointed out, so we can really see that. So, and I think Mr. Perroll suggested to, you know, work with Community Development Department. Maybe Arthur and I can chime in or other board members so that we can help assist the process. I think that would be great. But again, this is a public hearing. And just a reminder of where we are in the middle of the public hearing. The public hearing is still open. I'm going to understand that the board will choose not to close the public hearing, but to continue the public hearing because we have requested.
Catherine, this is Ally, it's hard to hear you.
Okay, sorry. And Ally, I see your hand is up. Did you want to make?
Catherine, sorry, my hand is not up, but Mitch Fishman, he does have his hand up. And it is difficult to hear you. It might be easier if you turn off.
Go ahead, Mr. Turn off my video.
I think that might be.
Please go ahead.
Madam Chair, you want me to go ahead?
Mr. Yes, please go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so I'll be short. I came here tonight thinking that the five points that I said in my letter were in fact going to happen. My wife and I have been in that Bobby's Lane location for 40 years, have worked really hard with our neighbors across the street, June and Howard Shea at 35 Bobby's Lane. And you may remember, we came to the meeting of September 30th, quite disappointed in what the plan was then, which in fact did have an access on Bobby's Lane. It had a, a large paved area that was at the bottom next to a stone wall. In fact, I was so agitated, I called up Commissioner Temple. We had a long discussion. I think at that point, he, he was pretty aware of it, but hadn't looked at the detailed plans. And he was concerned about the large amount of pavement that would be in that area at that time with a drainage system that was about half as, as large as the one today. So it seemed, it seemed like, you know, we, it was not a viable solution. And again, we've been very upset for many years with the town. We've been very upset with the tennis court, with the play area, with the inability of the town to actually deal with Bobby's Lane. And one of the results, and it's not all the town's problem, but one of the results is that Bobby's Lane at that apex point, Judy's, is quite bad. Drainage is terrible. Pooling is terrible, even in a minor rain and, and the rains that you had a couple, two or three weeks ago, you could float a small boat out there. So this drainage solution seemed to have some winning characteristics. In addition to the area that was adjacent to Lot Four was now going to be loaned and replaced with grass. And that it wouldn't face the intense drainage that would come down from a roadway that you'd have to increase the amount in that area. And that would actually take away from some of the drainage that is in the current plan that Thad has worked out. Again, it's not perfect. It certainly isn't going to accomplish all of the problem, all of the solutions for that area. And in fact, as I've said to the developer, we're willing to work to try to resolve our own problems in that area. But this is, this is starting us off on the right track. And I fear, I understand precedent, I'm a city planner myself, so I understand the attitude of boards who want to look down the road and create a situation that's defensible. And I understand that. But I also think that you have to balance out the interests of the neighbors at the various points of a subdivision. And I guess my final point would be Forest Beach Road is a, not a terribly used road. I mean, it has a few butters, but it's not a, a major roadway like Bobby's Lane is. To add even more traffic to that area caused by an access there would be actually a much more serious problem. And it's coming off of a much shorter public way, which is Forest, which is Forest Beach. So again, I would say that at this point, we have total agreement with our neighborhood. We're all quite happy to see this happen. And we're quite disappointed by what seems to be a, a direction towards Bobby's Lane. And I'm hoping that Mr. Perroll can work a better solution on Forest Beach because a drainage solution that depends on Bobby's Lane is one that I fear would not be as good as the current program that's being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fishman. All right. So I think if there's no further comments from the board, I think I do see a hand raised. Let me just see who, I think that was Mr. Fishman.
Tom.
Tom Kelsey. Yes, Ally?
Oh, sorry, Catherine, I just wanted to recognize that Tom Kelsey was raising his hand.
All right, great. So, Mr. Kelsey, would you like to speak? Please go ahead. Tom Kelsey, if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself and go ahead. He seems to be unmuted. Tom Kelsey, please go ahead, we're not able to hear you for some reason. So I, I can't seem to be able to get Mr. Kelsey. He seems to be unmuted, but we're not able to hear you, Mr. Kelsey, if you're speaking. All right. So, Mr. Kelsey? Now you're muted again. So I think we're just having some connection difficulties. We will try to hear your comments in the future, but I think we should move ahead. I just want to remind everyone, again, we're in the middle of a public hearing that is open. I'm understanding that the board, that we need to keep it open, that we won't close the public hearing and enter deliberations. We've requested additional design work and information from the applicant. So we will need to continue this public hearing to a date certain in the future. So I'm going to ask the applicant, I think you've heard what the board would like to see. And so we need to talk to Ally and Katie and the applicant and determine a date to continue this matter, to continue the public hearing. I know our next planning board meeting, I believe, is December 13th. But we do have a pretty full agenda for that meeting, I understand. And after that, and also we need to get a sense from the applicant how much time you need to do some of this work.
Would the next meeting be the 27th?
That is the next meeting, although that's not, not everybody's favorite day to have a meeting. But that is the next meeting.
Everyone should be filled with Christmas joy.
Okay, so is December 27th? You want to continue this public hearing to December 27th?
I think if we're going to meetings with town staff, planning board members, and give Mr. Temple enough time to review the plans, I think we'd have to go that far. We'd be severely disappointed with the 13th.
All right, sounds good. So I will need a motion from a board member to continue this public hearing to our December 27th meeting.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, so moved.
Thank you, and may I have a second to that motion? Yes?
Roger Griffin, no second now.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Ally, did you have a comment?
No, that wasn't me, Catherine.
Okay, thank you so much. Sometimes it's a little hard to see or hear who's speaking, my apologies. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft?
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I approve. We'll continue this public hearing to our December 27th meeting. And thank you, Thad, thank you, Mr. Perroll, thank you, everyone. We appreciate your participation.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Next item on the agenda is a request for comment or request for recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this is with regard to a proposed driveway in the Conservancy District. And this is regarding 305 Main Street. And do I have a presenter for this matter?
Good evening, Jamie Norcross, representing the Emerson Trust, owner of 305 Main Street.
Thank you, Jamie.
What you see in front of you is the proposed driveway. There is currently a gravel or dirt driveway that exists on the site. It's going to be enlarged a bit in the area with the parking area, which is located in between, to the right of the building marked at 305. So it's about 200 square feet larger in that area. The material is going to be shell or stone as opposed to the existing gravel. So it'll be a, a different material located in there in the driveway. That's going to be, again, expanded by about 200 square feet in that parking area. That entire area is located within the floodplain, so we don't really have anywhere else to locate the parking area that would be outside the Conservancy District. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, any questions, Arthur?
Yes, thank you, Catherine. I went out there to, to take a look at, at this and it was sort of difficult to figure things out until I actually got out there. You're showing two retaining walls. It appears off of the main proposed driveway off of Main Street. That retaining wall is looking to hold back an embankment and you're going to actually drop the grade there. There's no proposed contour, so it's hard to tell. But I would like a, a confirmation that that is the case there at that location.
Are you up, up at the top near Main Street?
Yeah.
Yes, that is the intent.
All right. But there is a subsequent expansion of the second driveway access, and this is for 15 School Street? That's also a request as part of this?
No, that's outside, I believe that's.
To expand that parking area?
I, I believe that's outside the Conservancy District.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. See, the flood, floodplain is right near the hand that Ally's running on the screen.
Okay, that's good because that was a fill area and I was going to be concerned about that. So now that the clarifications have been made, I don't have any issues, Catherine. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin has no issues.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, I don't have any issue.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, all my life I've seen that piece of property change hands and grow and, and do things there. It's quite an unusual piece of property, but I have no, no problem with what's going on.
Okay, thanks, Bob. And Bob Wirtschaft?
Yeah, according to the bylaw, it says the construction and maintenance of a driveway or roadway of minimum legal and practical width where no alternative means of access from an established way is available. Well, there is already an established way available. And I quite frankly, don't see any valid reason for expanding the, the existing driveway where we have passed the bylaw saying that we are not allowing additional by, building in the, in the conservation area. So very much against it. I, I don't believe there's any justification for it. And I'm going to vote no.
Okay. This is Catherine, can I just ask you to clarify? When you say there's an established way available, that's not this, what precisely do you mean?
Well, I mean, the, the, the access to the property is there. To make a parking space is not, it does not say in the bylaw that we will allow people to build in the Conservancy District if they want to expand their drive, their parking lot. It, it's talking about access, which is already there. There's no, to me, there is no, this is not allowed under our bylaw.
All right. You're just talking about the T turnaround?
I'm talking about the T turnaround, the, the portion that's being expanded.
Okay. And I'm looking at the plans and I am seeing that the reason they're doing that is because they're demolishing one, an existing building and building a new proposed one-bedroom dwelling. And that's probably why they want to have that additional turnaround.
Yes, Madam Chair, for, for what it's worth, we're, there's a building in the back that's entirely, or essentially entirely within the floodplain that we're tearing down and, and moving it. We tried to move it all the way out of the floodplain, but the zoning board would not grant us a variance for that. So some of that building will be left, a portion of it within the floodplain. And so the parking area that's being created is to accommodate that space. I think if you've gone down there, I mean, it's, it's sort of a hodgepodge of, of what's used as, as a driveway and parking already now. I think David's done as, as good a job as he can as defining the size of the existing versus the proposed. They think this will provide a real benefit to the property.
Okay. So this is Catherine again. Bob, is there a redesign of this that you feel would, would satisfy what needs to be done?
No, not really, not for, not for parking.
All right. All right, thank you. And Roger Griffin?
I have no comments.
All right. And this is Catherine. And I think Bob Wirtschaft, you're bringing up some good considerations. But as I understand it, the expansion is somewhat minimal. And it is to accommodate a, a new structure that we understand is under consideration and the removal of an old structure, is that correct, Jamie?
Yes, that is the, a part of the application for the zoning board is to create that new building that's located closer to School Street.
All right. And so for that reason, and because it's 200 square feet, which is fairly minimal. Jamie, do you think that, that the amount of expansion, that the applicant would agree to reduce that?
I'd have to talk to the applicant, I'm not sure on that answer tonight.
All right. I think we can go ahead and vote. I don't think I have any further questions. And if I may, what I will request is a motion from a board member to send a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion at effect?
Bob Dubus here, I'll make that motion to send a positive recommendation.
All right, and do I have a second to that motion?
Madam Chair, this is Warren Chain.
Madam Chair, this is Warren Chain, I'll second that.
All right, and so let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, Catherine, will we use our normal language of construction, etc.? Okay, fine, then Art Spru approve.
All right, thank you for the reminder. And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, I approve.
And Bob Wirtschaft?
Bob Wirtschaft disapprove.
Okay, thank you. And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, I approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. Thank you.
Bob Dubus disapprove too.
Okay, thank you everyone, and thank you Jamie. All right. So let me get resituated, so the next item.
Catherine, you're blowing out.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. All right, so the next item on our agenda, we do have a letter here from the Chair of the Airport Commission, and we want to consider the proposed zoning overlay district. He's proposing that they draft a zoning overlay district for the runway protection zone. And as you know, I'm brief, the zone exists at both ends of the runway, runway six and runway twenty-five. Right now, the location of the runway protection zone for the airport runs over the GB three zoning district in West Chatham. It's also the same area that we are considering rezoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. But whether it's GB three or West Chatham Neighborhood Center, the one runway protection zone intersects that area. And also, on the other end of the runway, it, it intersects a residentially zoned area. So what I would like to ask the board to do, I know the issues regarding the airport, there's many issues regarding the airport that are in the air in Chatham right now, many of them are controversial. And there's many factors to be considered. We are still planning a future meeting where we will be covering some of the questions and issues more completely with members of the Airport Commission and with Town Council and with the FAA consultant for the airport, Matt Karen. So we will have the opportunity to go more deeply and more thoroughly into a lot of the issues that pertain to the airport. I just want to remind the board that we're not considering these issues tonight. What I'd like to ask you is to just consider this issue that's proposed in the letter. And I will read the letter in just a moment, that the Airport Commission would like to draft a proposed bylaw amendment for the runway protection zone that would be pertaining to both ends of the runway, runway six and runway twenty-five, which currently intersect with the GB three zone in West Chatham and residential zone at the other end. And it's a technical, it's actually a procedural issue that we're considering here, and a technical issue regarding zoning. We want to consider whether a zoning overlay district is the appropriate zoning form or zoning mechanism to use in this case, rather than creating something that's integrated into the underlying zoning, which at the moment would be integrating it into the GB three area on the one end and the residential area on the other end, and potentially in future, moving forward would mean integrating it into our West Chatham Neighborhood Center proposed zoning. And what's being looked at now is a separate action, an over, a zoning overlay district. So. Yes, Mr. Gagin.
Have you finished? I'd like a point of order when you finish, please.
I actually haven't finished, I'd like to read the letter from Mr. Harrison and then go ahead. All right, so let's go ahead and read the letter from Mr. Harrison.
Madam Chair, I, I have a point of order first before anything is read.
Yes, what is your point of order, Mr. Gagin?
My point of order is that we have two agendas for this meeting. The first agenda I received didn't have any reference to the runway protection zone overlay district, and then the latest agenda that I received, I had it placed in there. Why are the board members being notified at the very last minute for these changes in the agenda? I'd like to have more time to think about these. We get an agenda that says one thing, and then it's changed to an agenda that has additional interest to it. So could you please explain why we have two different agendas for this meeting?
There were some points that need to be, needed to be clarified about the request from the Airport Commission, and so the letter was not included in, in the first agenda that went out. But it was included subsequently, which is and if you remember, at the board's request at some time in the past, we made the decision to send the packets out ten days in advance of the meeting, which is quite early. But the legal requirement for posting agenda items is actually much less than that. So it has been our practice that when required or when necessary, that we might add agenda items before the meeting even after the initial packet has gone out. And so that was really the only reason. I, I think there were some issues that just needed to be clarified. And it was included in, as we do with many items, included in the second version of the agenda. As we've done in the other items.
My understanding is that at the next meeting that we have with the Airport Commission, that once again, the Town Council has been invited. Please tell me, because I have no input as a member of this board, please tell me who's inviting Town Council to that meeting.
I, I think I think we are, we're inviting Town Council, but.
Madam Chair, please, please reference who we are, not me.
All right, thank you so much. I, I think the Planning Board as a whole, the Community Development Department, and the Airport Commission altogether are inviting, actually, I think it would be better to say the Planning Board and Community Development Department are inviting Town Council to that meeting.
As a, as a member of this board, I don't ever remember a request from the board members to invite Town Council. I don't, just don't remember it. I'd like to poll the rest of the board members as to their memory as to when they were consulted about inviting the Town Council to this meeting with the Airport Commission. Would you please do that poll for me?
You know what, I'm going to first confer with Katie Donovan and Ally because we're a bit off topic, to be honest.
We are not off topic, Madam Chair. The members of this board have a right to be informed as to what's happening. So I'm asking a question about which members of this board were asked to invite or had any discussion about inviting Town Council to the next meeting? I don't understand it, please explain.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is, yes, this is Katie Donovan. So if you'll recall, I believe it was a meeting back in August, there were, Town Council was present along with Matt Karen, Terry Whalen, and Huntley Harrison, and I believe one or two other members of the Airport Commission. My understanding is that there were some members of the Planning Board that still had unanswered questions, and we decided that we would continue that discussion. And to date, we, we have not done that. And so that was the intent on inviting all parties back to another meeting in the future.
But that doesn't answer my question. Even at that initial meeting, when were the members of this Planning Board asked if they wished to have Town Council present? That's my point. I've never been asked to have Town Council present. I've never voted to have Town Council present, and I don't understand who's doing that. I want a specific name of someone who's inviting Town Council to the Planning Board meetings. It was not I.
It was staff. It was staff.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I want or have any responsibility for who comes to these meetings. The agenda is not set by me or any other individual board member. That is not our responsibility. I, I think you're, you're trying to make a fight here, Tom, that just doesn't make any sense.
And I do see Arthur's hand is raised. Arthur, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, our earlier discussions before we met in August with the Airport Commission, we did have a discussion about meeting with the Airport Commission about this and other topics associated with the airport and its impacts through the West Chatham Neighborhood Center rezoning. And we did talk very clearly that we were concerned about making sure we're getting the right guidance and that we asked to have Town Council present at that meeting, whenever that was. Quite frankly, as a continuation of this, we should have Town Council present because this is in an area of how do we go about doing this? I, I don't have the background on this, I've never dealt with an airport overlay and how we would deal with that as a planning board. So I supported that at the time, and we did have a discussion as a board about it at the time. So, and I agree with, with Bob that you're creating an issue here that doesn't belong in the discussion. We don't set the agenda, we, we're here to actually act on it.
Yes. And I think, Roger, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, the only question I had, yeah, yes, I'm here. I guess is just part of this, I mean, is, is Town, do we have Town Council with us tonight?
We don't have Town Council tonight, because as I mentioned, the discussion tonight.
I know, but I guess, I guess on that though, that was, I think that's what I remember about even bringing that up, is that I was concerned that, again, like Art said, that I'm not an expert on this, and I think even the board of select boards admitted they're not an expert on this. And for that reason, I guess I'm just, I'll be honest, I'm very uncomfortable hearing anything about the airport or anyone reading me a letter about the airport. So we have, there are some questions that we really didn't have answered, and I'm not a difficult person, you know that. But I am not comfortable tonight, even though having the letter written, you read to me, because I'm, I have no problems with the airport, but I, with the passion, I'm concerned about anything going on at this point, it's going to be very important to us down the road, so I don't even know if I really want to even hear the letter, I think maybe, this was the sixteenth and we didn't get it for a couple of days, I guess with me, yeah, I'm, I am very, I'm a logical, I'm concerned. And I just, I don't know, this was the sixteenth and it was, here it is, we didn't get this like the last couple of days, and you know, I'm not saying we're being played with, but I think this is, you know Catherine, like you said, this is a hot issue. This is going to be a deal breaker. And I'm sorry, I just feel, I feel that way.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin?
Actually, Tom, I think I would like to speak. So I just want to clarify what the issues are for the board and what the procedural issues are here. You have a letter that was submitted, that is a request to the board to consider a matter. And it was submitted within sufficient legal time to include it on your agenda. And so it was properly submitted and properly submitted to you. What the request is, I don't know if I have an option not to read the letter. I think it is on the agenda, and I think I am obliged to read the letter, and I do not believe, I will ask Katie and Ally for their opinions on this, but I do not believe that I have the option or that you have the option to say that you will not hear this letter tonight. And I do want to clarify what the procedure is that you are considering with this letter. What is proposed to you here is that the Airport Commission will undertake the drafting of a proposed bylaw amendment that will address the RPZ issues. And the form that that will take will be an overlay district. So that overlay district will be a separate action to anything that's going on in the underlying zoning, be it GB three, be it residential, or be it the new West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Now, as the Planning Board, under Massachusetts General Law statute, you are required essentially to hear this request. You would be required, if this draft of the, of the proposed zoning for the RPZ is brought to you by the Airport Commission, you are required by Massachusetts law to hear it and to go through certain procedures that the Planning Board does with proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw amendments. Somewhat similar to what you would do if a citizen's petition for a zoning bylaw amendment came before you. Or somewhat similar to the way we are acting with the historical commission's zoning bylaw that they are drafting. So we would need to hear it, we would need to hold the public hearing on it. And then we would need, what our vote would be is we would either recommend it or not recommend it to annual town meeting. But you actually, to the best of my knowledge, we cannot say no, we won't listen to it. It's actually part of our responsibility as the Planning Board, and it's required by statute. Then that proposed zoning bylaw, as you know, after we hold the public hearing and we would vote whether to recommend it or not recommend it, it goes to annual town meeting, and that's where the ultimate decision is made as to whether or not it's passed and becomes part of our bylaws. So that's what we're considering tonight, and basically the only consideration is this kind of technicality of overlay district in contrast to including it in underlying zoning. The advantages, and I'm, I'm going to ask Katie and Ally for comments on this. The advantages of the overlay district is that it is a separate action. And that the underlying zoning that does, that can be undertaken separately. So, for example, if, for example, we draft the West Chatham Neighborhood Center proposed rezoning, and that doesn't pass, the underlying zoning is still GB three. And the RPZ zoning would be an overlay district applied to that. And on the other end would be an overlay district applied to the residential underlying zoning. So that's really all we're considering tonight, and I'm going to ask Katie and Ally for additional comments and explanations about the procedural issues and the overlay district.
I have a point of order, Madam Chair, when they're through speaking, please. Tom Gagin?
All right, but let them speak first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Katie, and if Ally wants to jump in at any point, I, I'm happy to have her do so. So as far as, you know, the item being on the agenda tonight, looking, as we're, as we're looking to move the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning forward, we thought it was important for the board to have all of the information in front of them to determine whether or not they felt that they would, that, whether or not they were going to integrate any RPZ language into the underlying West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. And so in order for us to be able to move that forward, a determination needs to be made in that regard. When we received the letter from the Airport Commission, we decided that it would be beneficial to have this conversation because again, an overlay district, in staff's opinion, is the appropriate way to move forward with zoning for the airport. One of the things that I had told, talked to the Chair about was just to, to read a definition of what an overlay district is. Just for everybody's clarification, an overlay district is a special district or zone which addresses special land use circumstances or environmental. which addresses special land use circumstances or environmental safeguards and is superimposed over the underlying existing zoning districts. Permitted uses in the underlying zoning district shall continue, subject to compliance with the regulations of the zone or district. And so the idea is that over time, again, in RPZ, um, the RPZ is, is on both ends of the runway. So to not include it or to include it only in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, underlying zoning did not seem appropriate. The inclusion of the letter was just to, to determine, uh, a path forward for both of these items, um, in the future. For us, again, us to be able to move West Chatham forward and also to be able to, um, look at appropriate ways to move forward with an RPZ overlay district. Again, as was discussed, um, having the experts weigh in on what would be appropriate with an RPZ overlay district. The idea, um, would be that the Airport Commission would work with Town Council and their, uh, airport consultant and then provide us with a draft zoning bylaw for consideration at a future meeting. This is not asking the Planning Board to undertake, um, any additional, um, workload at this point other than what they would be required to do so, as, uh, the Chair stated, as what would be done by a citizen petition. So, um, I'm not sure if Ally wants to add anything to that at this point in time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, no, Katie, sorry Catherine.
Okay. No, go ahead. So Ally, did you have anything to add?
Um, not much. Um, I think Katie definitely covered almost everything that I wanted to say. Just wanted to also, um, just let the Board know that another reason why we think that potentially an overlay district in this area would be better than the underlying, putting this, uh, RPZ area in the underlying zoning district is because the RPZ might change in the future. And then that would mean that we would have to change the underlying zoning as well. So to have it as an overlay district, in our opinion, as Katie said, uh, makes more sense in this case. Um, and also to have the experts of the Airport Commission, um, and their consultants really be the ones that, uh, create it, we think is probably the best path forward. So again, if we have any questions, please let us know.
I see Roger's hand is raised.
I have a point of order, uh, that's on hold, Madam Chair.
I guess, I guess all I'm saying at this point is, I mean, everyone keeps on saying this. I mean, we are not the experts and we're dealing with the experts at the airport or maybe their consultants. All I'm saying is when we talk about the airport, I think legal counsel should be at these meetings. I mean, I just, I don't think that is, none of us have this expertise and I think we have to do this right. I mean, I guess that if there was enough time to get the letter done, it was, it was enough time to really get into this meeting. We should have had enough time to get legal counsel to be here for our support. It's all we've got.
Yes. Um, Katie, did you want to, as I understand it, legal counsel is, was not available for this particular meeting.
Maybe we should have, then maybe we should have postponed this for another week. I think, you know, we want to get this done and I have no grudge against the, we want to get, we want to get this done. But let's like, let's get it done right. I'm sorry, it's just that's the way I feel about it. I'm not the only one. We would just, I mean, it's like Catherine said, this has become a major issue. We have to get, we, and we have to get through this. I understand that.
Okay, we're not, um, we're not considering the draft tonight. All we're considering is if we'll, um, use an overlay district because if we don't make that decision, it means the issue will come up as we move forward with the West Chatham zoning. If we understand that an overlay district, uh, recommended by Town Council, recommended by staff, is the proper technical mechanism, it's a technical decision. This is a technical and procedural decision. We're not making any decisions on the content of the proposed rezoning for the RPZ. Just the technical decision that the overlay district, uh, would be preferable and agreeing to that. Then it also, it, it makes that a separate action and it makes our path forward with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, um, um, more feasible that we're able to move forward with that, as Katie Donovan explained. So, um, now Tom Gagin, your point of order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, would you please tell me how many members of the Airport Commission are present at this meeting tonight?
Um, I'm going to have to look at the attendance. I do see Mr. Harrison is here. And I just see Mr. Harrison. I don't see any other members present unless I just see the Chair present.
Madam Chair, I, there was another member of the Airport Commission here earlier, but he had a commitment that he had to leave, uh, the meeting, uh, because the prior conversations went so long.
Okay, thank you very much, Huntley. So, and Huntley Harrison is the one who wrote the letter. So, um, you know, it's, it would be normal for him to be present.
Yes, but Madam Chair, Tom Gagin.
Yes, go ahead.
Recognized or not?
Yes, I've recognized just times, I guess.
Yes, thank, thank you. Uh, this member of the Board, uh, has requested on multiple occasions, speaking directly to the Chair of the Airport Commission, that all of the members of the Commission be present so that the members of this Board can talk to more than just one person. We have never had any additional conversations with any other Airport Commissioners other than Mr. Harrison. I don't know why that's true. Seven of us show up for these meetings and one or two people from the Airport Commission show up. I don't see that as a quid pro quo on their part. And if they're so interested in this as being very important to them, why can't more members of the Airport Commission, uh, have the courtesy of making themselves available to this Board?
May I address that?
Um, yes, if you wish.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead if you wish.
With all due respect, I think it might be construed as a, an open meeting law violation since we would, unless we were formally convened, like we did with the, uh, with the, uh, select board earlier in the year to go over airport governance. If, if we were just to, to attend the meeting, uh, as a group, there could be deliberation that would take place that would then violate open meeting law. So that's why, uh, this meeting, we were only, only two were planned to be here. And in the last meeting, uh, where we were present, there were also two Commissioners. So if we want to meet that way, I'm fine with it. We can, we can set up a joint meeting and have it formally set up so that your, your group is present and the, uh, Airport Commission is present. But that has to go through a formal process.
But we have set up, Madam Chair, we have set up and asked for joint meetings. So the open meeting bylaw argument is null and void. We have specifically asked that we have a joint meeting with all members of the Airport Commission present. Uh, I think that would be very helpful for the Board to have different points of view, uh, different access to people that don't have a particular, um, issue, uh, with, uh, meeting with us in public. Not a problem.
I don't have a problem with that either. However, I am surprised of the fact that we need to be, have a joint meeting. That was never mentioned to me.
So this is Catherine, and I just like to clarify quite a number of issues here. And we do need to move on, uh, and we do need to move forward with this letter. For the reading of this letter and for the restricted consideration that the Board, that, that in my discussions with, uh, community development staff, that we felt we needed to cover tonight, which is not, and as I mentioned, we are planning a full meeting to cover all of the questions regarding the airport at a later date. It cannot be scheduled now because some of the part, key participants are simply not available right now. We would have Town Council present, members of the Airport Commission present. We would have also the FAA Consultant Matt Karen present. And it's at that other meeting that we would want to have a more full discussion and vet the airport issues and questions from the Planning Board. That is not this meeting and that is not this agenda point. This agenda point is specifically with regards to a very specific procedural and technical issue that has come before the Board with this letter. And that's all we need to consider tonight. And I do need to read this letter. It is on the agenda. And just be it known that a further discussion will be scheduled in the future. Some of that is just based on the availability of the people who are needed. Uh, it's a very simple matter. I do need to read this letter. You can make a determination, um, and as Katie Donovan explained, what is useful to us in making the determination that we will go with an overlay district rather than something integrated into the underlying zoning is that it allows the West Chatham Neighborhood Center Proposed Zoning Amendment to move forward and to understand that anything regarding the runway protection zone will be a separate action. So that's one advantage to making that decision tonight. I will also let the Board know that, um, once I read this letter, if you make no decision or take no action, it actually is not going to matter because what will occur is what I did describe earlier, that as I understand it, the Airport Commission, uh, will be undertaking the drafting, um, of a zoning bylaw for the RPZ zone as an overlay district, uh, along with Community Development Department, Town Council and the FAA Consultant. And in a similar matter, that we might need to hear a citizen's petition for a zoning, uh, amendment, that draft of a bylaw will come before us in the future. And as I mentioned earlier, according to Massachusetts General Law by statute, it is the Planning Board's, uh, responsibility to hear that draft, uh, and then to hold a public hearing on it. And then our vote would be either to recommend it or not recommend it to annual town meeting. So, so whether or not we discuss this letter tonight, um, that's still what's going to happen in the future. And you are required by, by statute to go ahead with that procedure. So I just wanted to make that clear. Um, and I do see Warren's hand is raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, and this is Warren Chain. Um, I, I do believe that the staff recommendation of the Planning Department squares with my belief that an overlay district is probably the best way for reasons we don't need to discuss tonight. I also think it would be, um, not only inappropriate, but impossible to have a discussion on any substantive point, um, with the Airport Commission, even if they were all present. I'm not prepared to talk about anything that might be in their draft. I do believe that what we want to see, what I want to see is what the experts might propose. Then we can discuss that and I can have an opinion about, um, something substantive. Um, I don't think this meeting tonight, as you pointed out, Madam Chairman, is for any purpose other than to, um, recognize that the Airport Commission is about drafting an overlay district and, uh, for, for future discussion and future meeting with the Planning Board, perhaps, a joint meeting or otherwise. That's not for tonight's, uh, agenda. So, uh, I just wanted to say, I believe an overlay district makes sense. And when there's time to talk about it, we'll talk about it. But there's nothing too substantive to talk about. And so, I, you know, uh, whether we read the letter or not, uh, I'm not prepared to talk about what's in the letter, uh, at all. But I do think the idea of having the overlay district and having it drafted by the Airport Commission is the proper way to proceed. So just wanted to get that off my chest.
Okay, thank you, Warren. And again, as I've said a couple of times, Warren, I think you're entirely correct. Uh, the intention of this agenda point tonight is not to have any substantive discussion. That will be done later when we have the draft and when we have all the parties present who need to be present, uh, as I've mentioned, which would be members of the Airport Commission, Town Council, their consultant, FAA Consultant Matt Karen, uh, at the least. And so that is something that we want to schedule for a future meeting. The only purpose of this letter tonight is to determine, as you've mentioned, Warren, whether we can move forward, um, agree to the plan that the Airport Commission will begin to work on the draft of an overlay district in contrast to having to include it in underlying zoning. So maybe what I could do is just, um, pull the Board right now, uh, and then I'll read the letter. But, uh, I would just ask you if you would agree with what Warren so clearly stated, that we would just agree to this path of action, which is the Airport Commission will work on the draft of an overlay district uh, for the, um, runway protection zone at both ends of the runway. So Art Spru, could I have your, um, opinion on that?
Uh, Art Spru, thank you, Catherine. Um, I'm supportive of the overlay district. I don't want anything to interfere with our pathway on the West Chatham Neighborhood, uh, Center rezoning. We have gone quite a far ways. It's been in a neighborhood of two years that we've been working on this. And we're on a pathway for May Town Meeting. I don't want anything to interrupt that. Therefore, an overlay district is completely separate and independent for whatever zoning is in West Chatham is, is something that could take two years too, to approve. And I don't want it interfering with our current direction because that's the most important thing. It's not just the, the RPZ that we're worried about. It's an entire West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And so therefore, I'm supportive of what Warren was saying. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so Bob Dupus, can I have your opinion on this?
I, uh, I really don't have that much of an opinion on it. I understand what you're trying to do, understand what you're trying to say. Uh, I kinda need more information. I would imagine that the overlay district will probably be the easiest thing to put forth to have the town vote on and get a, instead of us trying to make a decision, uh, which I think is a little better. And then the town gets a chance to have their what say and what for and hash it out. And then if it goes to, uh, uh, town, the town to vote on it, so be it.
All right. And Bob Wertschafter?
Yeah, I'm agreeing that we should, uh, go for a, uh, go for this as an overlay because I really don't want to have to deal with it at all. And, uh, it pretty much takes up most of it out of our hands if we.
Yeah.
We let that go as an overlay.
Okay, great, yes. And, um, Roger?
I guess at this point, I really don't have it. I can't, I have no opinion, make, can't make any comments tonight. I, I need some more time to think about it. Sorry.
Okay, great. And, um, Tom Gagin? I saved the best for last.
No, you didn't. You manipulated the best to last. I think that this Board has, um, no obligation to deal with a special interest group of the airport. I think that the Airport Commission, uh, in terms of making an overlay district proposal is the right way to go. And perhaps they shouldn't go through this Board, they should go through their own citizen's petition. Uh, I don't think this Board has the expertise to get involved with this. There's been a long history of this, uh, airport and how it's been used and changed. And the future is very, very critical to the citizens of this, uh, community. And I don't want to support a special interest group. I think that I took an oath, uh, as a member of this Board to support the community and not the airport. I have nothing personally against the airport. I know what its function was. I don't know what its function is going to be. But if the Airport Commission feels so strongly about their issue or issues that pertain to the runway protection zone, then let them form a citizen petition and go forward and bring it to Town Meeting. Uh, I think that's the way in which the community can act and interact with what is being requested, uh, from the Airport Commission. It should not go through this Board. Uh, there's been a long history of what hasn't happened in this area of the West Chatham, uh, Neighborhood Village. And I think we should stick to what we've been doing. And I think we should stick to what we've been doing in terms of the zoning. And again, repeat myself, let the airport commissioners file their own plan and bring it to the town for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gagin. And this is Catherine, and I do want to clarify this, although I've said it a number of times this meeting and at many other meetings. That's exactly what's happening here, and that's exactly what's being proposed in this letter. The Airport Commission will take on the responsibility of drafting the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to address the RPZ issues and do so in an overlay district, which can be a separate action to the underlying zoning, whether that zoning remains GB3 in West Chatham or the residential on the other end, or whether it's changed to our West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. However, as I've explained, in the case of a citizen's petition, or for another example, the case of, of another commission or committee preparing a bylaw, the Historical Commission is preparing, drafting a bylaw on historical preservation. In both of those situations, the procedure is the same. The citizen's petition proposed bylaw amendment comes before the Planning Board. That is a required procedure. It is required by Massachusetts state law. The Planning Board is the body that will hear that draft bylaw and will evaluate it and will hold a public hearing for it. The Planning Board is the body appointed by Massachusetts state law that will hold a public hearing for that proposed bylaw amendment. Then what our action would be in the case of a citizen's petition or in the case of this draft that's being prepared by the Airport Commission, is that we would either recommend it or not recommend it. That would be our vote to town meeting, and then it would go before town meeting. So that's actually exactly what is being done here, Mr. Gagin, is that it is being brought to us in the form of a citizen petition. And the intention of putting it on the agenda tonight is simply to make the determination that an overlay district is acceptable to the Planning Board, just so that we can understand that this is a separate action to the action that we are involved in, in drafting the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning, so that each can go forward according to their own procedural definitions. So I thank you for bringing that up, but I just want to make that clear that that's exactly what's being done. So I do see
My point, Madam Chair. I'm sorry?
I was going to call on Warren because I see that his hand is raised.
Madam Chairman, you've already recognized me. I've had my piece. I don't know how my hand goes down, so.
Okay, all right, no problem. So, Mr. Gagin, did you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do. My comment is that this board should not be involved in this process of changing the zoning. The citizen's petition is a means by which the Airport Commission can address their issues. I don't think it's the, within the preview of, of this particular board to deal with this. Let them go directly to the citizens of this town. And whether a town council or the staff, if the decision is ours, why are we involved in, in this decision that a lot of us don't have a clear understanding of what the issues are? I read this letter that you're about to read, I assume, and I've also been hearing that we will not be, as members of the board, be able to discuss this tonight. There are a lot of issues within this letter that I've read that's dated November 16th that I take issue with. They're not true statements. And that's what bothers me. There's so much here that needs to be discussed and understood. And the letter itself is just full of, of innuendo and, and misstatements that I would like to discuss this at some point with the rest of the board members. This is a very, very frustrating process, and I feel I'm being railroaded by town council, by the chair of this board, by the staff to do something that I don't feel comfortable in doing. That's my point.
All right, I do see that Katie Donovan's hand is raised. I also see Bob Wertschafter. I'm going to ask Katie to speak.
Sure, Madam Chair, I just, I just want to clarify that, yes, so regardless of where the petition comes from, even if it's the Planning Board's own petition, the Planning Board is then required to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to town meeting under Mass. general law. So the Planning Board needs to be involved in the process, no matter where the petition originates from. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. And Bob Wertschafter, did you want to go ahead? Bob Wertschafter?
I was going to say the exact same thing.
All right. So I hope that clarifies it. And certainly, discussion is allowed. We've been discussing it so far. And once the letter is read, if further discussion is required, we can do that. So why don't I go ahead and read the letter? As I understand it, as with all correspondence, I can't, you know, not read the letter. So this is a letter addressed to the chair and to the Planning Board, and it is from Mr. Harrison, who is the chair of the Chatham Airport Commission. The attached document outlines the Federal Aviation Administration Advisory for Runway Protection Zones, RPZ, and the relevant federal grant assurances to which the sponsor, the town, and the Airport Commission must adhere. After much discussion at several meetings, it has become clear that the Planning Board needs this information to be placed in an aviation-related context and to better understand the Commission's request for overlay districts for the RPZs at both ends of the runway. Runway 6, which is the West Chatham Route 28 end, and runway 24, Cranberry Bog Agnes Lane end. It is important to consider the RPZs at both ends of the runway at this time, even though the underlying zoning requirements for each one may differ. Pursuing RPZ overlay districts for both ends will save time and effort later. See attached runway end graphics. With the broad authority vested by Massachusetts general law under MGL Chapter 90 to the Airport Commission to exercise the care, custody, and management of the airport, and as the primary sponsor representative to the FAA on aviation matters under federal grant assurances, the Airport Commission's responsibility associated with the acceptance of funds obligates the Commission to maintain and operate the airport safely and efficiently in accordance with specified commissions, conditions to maximize the safety of those in the air and those on the ground. Recommending restricted development in the RPZs via overlay districts is an important facet of this responsibility. Current property owners in the affected areas should see no effect due to the change in zoning, as pre-existing non-conforming uses would be permitted to continue. It is what could happen in the future under the current zoning that is crucial to the Planning Board's ultimate determination. For these reasons, the Airport Commission is recommending the development of overlay district for each of the RPZs. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this matter. Regards, Huntley Harrison, Chairman, Airport Commission. So I think that's fairly simple. It's what we've been discussing. I think we can understand that what the procedure is, that very similar to a citizen's petition. The draft will be made by the Airport Commission. It will, in future, be brought to the Planning Board. We may be able, we should be able to have more substanti, substantive discussion at that time because there will be substance to discuss. And what our role is, is that we would hold the public hearing for that proposed bylaw amendment, and we would vote whether to recommend it or not to recommend it to town meeting. This is what we do for all citizen's petitions or for any zoning amendment proposals from any other town committees or, or commissions. So it's a procedural, it's basically a procedural issue that we're required to do by Mass. general law. So I hope that clarifies things. And I'll ask Katie or Ally if they have any further comments or clarifications before we move on to the next agenda point.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, I, I didn't know if you wanted to recognize anybody in the audience, if anybody in the audience wanted to speak.
Oh, sure, yes. I, I, again, I have a little trouble seeing hands raised. I do see that Elaine Gibbs has her hand raised. Would you like to speak, Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, thank you. Listening to this conversation tonight, I'm getting a little concerned here. As Mr. Harrison said, the Airport Commission represents the town as the sponsor. The sponsor of the town are the people. Okay, you guys are the people, too. The Planning Board is the one that determines what goes on here. By talking about an overlay now, what you're saying is there would be two separate warrant articles. One would be on the underlying, and then one would be on the overlay. The problem with that is
That's correct.
If the overlay fails, then you have an underlying zoning that is in direct violation of the FAA. And I don't know how you, as a town, who are representing, you know, the people of the town, can ignore that and give yourself arms-length on that. You've been notified that the FAA says you cannot build there. So I believe now, when I was initially in favor of the overlay, thinking that that would all go in as one package and one vote, the fact that literally somehow the overlay could fail, and you have this underlying thing that is going to allow increased development within the RPZ that is against the federal regulations. And I don't know how you can knowingly do that. So I would suggest that I think that's going to be difficult and, and possibly inappropriate for the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham to ignore the RPZ in your own underlying bylaw and leave it to the citizens to decide. And if it fails, we're in violation of the FAA. And we have signed agreements and taken $10 million from the federal and state government under grant assurances, saying that we will follow their guidelines. So I don't know how you can not in, in the underlying zoning. So that's all I have to say now. But I, I think the direction this is going is going to be a serious problem. Thank you.
Okay. Just a reminder that the current underlying zoning, how to say this? I mean, I'm just allowing that, you know, ultimately, as you know, Elaine, everything gets decided at annual town meeting by the people of this town. And we do our best to formulate things and to present things to the public so people have enough understanding that they can vote with confidence and knowledge. But still, it's not possible to know. It's, you know, if they are two separate actions. Right now, there is underlying zoning in West Chatham that is GB3. So it's also possible, a possible outcome that the West Chatham Neighborhood Center rezoning would not pass town meeting. We'd still have GB3 zoning there, which also, you know, is not, is not in, what's the word, does not reflect the requirements of the RPZ. And on the other side, we have residential zoning, which also does not reflect the requirements of the RPZ. So, so I understand your point. It's a good point. There, we could explore, but it, it exists now. That situation exists right now with GB3 in West Chatham and residential at the other end. Other comments?
Madam Chair, Mr. Levitt has his hand up?
All right, yes. Mr. Levitt, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Am I live?
Yes, I can hear you. I think everyone can hear you. Thank you, Rick.
Well, all right. This has been a very interesting conversation. And, and I guess we can get bogged down in the technical details. But in my opinion, your board is the wrong forum to consider this matter. The Airport Commission's request that will end progress in large areas of West Chatham is detrimental to the neighborhood. And I'm looking forward, as you say, to the next level of this discussion. To elaborate on that, the magnitude of proposed changes goes, by the Airport Commission, goes well beyond an appointed commission's scope. The Commission's sharply refuted claim is that current property owners in the affected areas should see no effect due to the change in zoning they are proposing. However, a letter in your packet from tonight from a longtime major West Chatham property owner states that the Commission's request will lower his property value, greatly affecting his family's well-being and his plans to benefit the Town of Chatham. He is not the only person that will be affected by the Airport Commission's plan. I'm, I'm going to suggest tonight, and I will suggest it again, there is scope for negotiations that can result in satisfying each interest. Local property owners and advocates for the comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan that provides for housing, workforce housing in West Chatham. That process should start now with policy direction from elected leaders. The Airport Commission's request that the Planning Board drastically change West Chatham zoning to create dense, dead zones is unnecessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levitt. And I did see a couple of other hands raised. Paula Lofgren?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will not offer any thoughts on zoning, but I do have comments about, two comments about information in Mr. Harrison's letter you might consider. One is that the size of the runway protection zone in Mr. Harrison's graphic is still under debate for its present, reflects present-day visibility conditions. The RPZ requirements for decreased visibility operations in the new master plan are considerably larger. Just a thought about the size of the RPZ. And the other comment is to take note of grant assurance number 22, economic nondiscrimination, because it states that the airport is available to all types, kinds, and classes of aeronautical activities. The Airport Commission has recently signed contracts with the FAA, which have extended our obligations under grant assurances for the next 20 years, so the year 2041. Who can imagine what kind of aircraft will be invented, developed, and allowed to land at our airport? Turbo props and personal jets may just be the beginning. What will be the effect of these aircraft on West Chatham development and West Chatham residents? So, just a thought. Thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Very much. And I see another hand raised. M and M?
Hi, that's Michael Thompson.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not a technical discussion, but discussion of what is actually happening. Have you ever seen a Pilatus land over central West Chatham, especially at night? I was gobsmacked and horrified just two nights ago. I was outside Ocean State Joblot in the dark when the sky was suddenly filled with a monster with four blazing eyes. It roared hideously just above my head, like a horror movie. What was this plane doing so low and deafening me over the center of West Chatham, supposed to be a neighborhood? It was actually a treetop height, which explains why the airport wants to cut down the trees around the gas station and all those trees around the Ocean State Joblot to allow access to this monster. It is totally unacceptable to have five-ton, 54-feet-wide monsters flying at 100 miles an hour so close to businesses, a major highway, gas station, residences. There are 19 residences, residences in both RPZs. All these people, things, and people are actually in the RPZ, and including lengthening the runway people actually in the RPC, and including lengthening the runway, should never have been allowed over the years. However, it's too late now. The stable door was opened and the horse has bolted. A zoning overlay will have no impact on this egregious situation and can only encourage it with implications for the rest of West Chatham. As the town's planning board, you cannot support a placebo. You have to pursue a proper resolution of the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Um, I do see that Huntley's hand is raised, but before I ask you to speak, Huntley, I just wanted to get back to Elaine and mention that, Elaine, you had submitted a letter after, uh, the other most recent meeting where the, uh, West Chatham Neighborhood Center was under discussion, and I sent you a reply. And in my reply, I did say that I would read the letter at our next meeting. And I just wanted to ask you if you would like me to read that letter, or if you would like to cover those points, some of the points you've already covered.
I would not put anyone through that. It was a long time ago. Um, I'd have to read it first. Um, and maybe I'll just save it for public hearing. Okay? So this has gone on too long. So, um, no, I will. Thank you for asking.
All right. And I thank you. All right. So let me just see if there's, so I do see, um, Huntley Harrison. Is your hand raised from before, or did you want to make a comment?
I just want to make a quick comment. Um, the first one I'd like to make is that, just so everyone in the public knows, the size of the RPC is not changing. It is eight acres. It will stay eight acres. That's the way it's, it is, and it's the way it will be. The other thing I'd like to say is that Mr. Gagin said that my letter contained innuendo and misstatements. Mr. Gagin, I invite you to write a letter to the Airport Commission outlining those misstatements and innuendo. I would be more than happy to entertain your letter. Uh, I know there's some passion among the citizens regarding the airport, comments that say the airport is going, is expanding. We can't expand. We're fixed size. It's not going to expand. The runway can't go anywhere for, any more than what it is. And so I think we've heard over the year, over the years, actually, and in the, in the newspaper, and I even wrote a letter to the newspaper, saying there's a lot of misinformation out there. No one seems to be listening to the Airport Commission. No one wants to hear what we're saying, for whatever reason. We're putting it out there. We're letting you know exactly what's happening. And we're trying to increase safety for people on the ground and also the people coming in, in the, in the air, in the airplanes. Does that mean we have to do some things that might be unpleasant to accomplish that safety? Yes, which is unfortunate. We are now making up for, for, for situations and decisions that were not made years ago. As Dr. Thompson said, the horse is out of the barn. I agree. But now we have to try to do our best to increase the safety factor at our airport. And we're working very hard to do that. And people aren't listening to us. As you all know, tomorrow is a, is a very important meeting of the Charter Review Committee. They, the Charter Review Committee wants to have the Select Board take over the Airport Commission responsibilities. That's very concerning. It's concerning to me as the Commissioner. It's concerning to Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and ultimately probably to the FAA. But it's our, our hope that by making the airport safer and the overlay district is part of that, is something that we can, we can all live with. And by doing so, we will all be safer to run. And I, I'm not gonna, I don't want to get into it tonight with other people. I, I, I'm basically gonna sign off. Uh, we've been here a long, long time. And, you know, I've made my statement, and I thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Huntley. Uh, this is Catherine. So I think we do need to just sum up, and I'm gonna, um, ask for, uh, some input from Katie and Ally. Uh, what I understand now, uh, in response to the letter, we have, and again, we did not take a formal vote, but just in hearing the opinions of the board, we have four board members who are comfortable using the technical form of zoning of the overlay district. Um, three others are not ready to form an opinion or are opposed. So with that in mind, I just want to ask, do we need to take a formal vote? Or do you think we have sufficient discussion that we can move on and move forward in considering our West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning? And let's see, now there's all kinds of hands raised. Um, hold on. Um, I, I do think I'd like to hear a response from Katie or Ally before I call on other people.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Ally.
Yeah. No, Katie, you can go ahead. It's fine.
I think it would be helpful to get a sense of the board if they, if, if the board would like you to respond with a letter, uh, back to the Airport Commission, uh, with the suggestion that they work on a draft and, and then have a, and then we can set up another meeting, um, a joint meeting, if that's what the board would like to do. Um, I think it's, you know, I think that the important thing that we were looking for tonight was, is, you know, to, to look at the context, um, for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. And so I think that that's, you know, getting a sense of the board, I think is more important than a formal vote.
All right.
That would be my suggestion at this point.
All right. Great. Um, Roger, did you want to speak? Otherwise, I will go through and I'll get a sense of the board following Katie's suggestion that we send a reply to the Airport Commission, that they go ahead and begin the draft of the overlay district for the RPCs. So, um, if there's no other comments, why don't we do that? So Arthur, can I get a sense of your, uh, opinion on that course of action?
Uh, yes, I, I find that as an acceptable course of action.
Okay. Thank you. And Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, this board should not be involved in any issues with the Airport Commission. Let them deal with it on their level. Uh, I just can't support, uh, their, uh, approach to this. Uh, the buzzword that they use over and over again is safety. How the heck are these planes, which are coming in now that have been described as rather large and oversized from things we've never seen before, and what's going to happen in the future? How does that increase our safety? How does lowering the approach to the runway from 600 feet to 200 feet improve our safety? This board needs to talk about what's in the best interest of all of the citizens in Chatham and not just the airport. Quite frankly, I have no faith that the Airport Commissioners are going to do anything that's going to improve the, uh, life and style of what we have come to know as a small puddle-hopping airport for hobbyists over the last 70 or 80 years. I just don't think that's in the cards.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Warren Chain?
Uh, this is Warren Chain. I'm in favor of that proposed course of action.
Thank you. And Bob Dupus?
This is Bob. A little undecided. I think the Airport Commission should be doing their thing, and we should, I know it has to come to us, and, and let them do their thing, and then if they gotta submit it for, because we have to look at it, then so be it.
Okay. That's basically what we're asking you. I, I mean, that's basically the course of action that we're, that I'm asking the board. Is that okay with you? So that they're gonna do their thing, and then it will come back to us similarly in the same manner that a citizen's petition would come before us. Um, Bob Wertschafter?
Yeah, I had said that I really didn't think we should be involved in this, but I, I have to say Elaine's argument is, is, uh, coming, uh, around to me. Uh, I, I am concerned of what, what the ramifications would be for a, um, an overlay district, both whether passed or didn't pass. I don't know how we can't, won't have to integrate it into what we're doing. And it's almost like, uh, why are we bothering, uh, to do any of this planning in West Chatham if, if most of it is going to be unbuildable in the future for whether we have the overlay or not? We shouldn't be building in, in most of our, of the district. So I,
Oh, you're cut out, Bob. Somehow you got cut off. Are you still with us, Bob?
Merge ours in or not?
So we missed a good, I don't know, 30 seconds of what you said.
Oh, shoot. I've been having some disconnection issues. And I, I'm, I'm for the Commission going ahead and doing their, uh, their overlay. Uh, how, how we deal with it after that is, is now up in the air to me.
All right. Um, and Roger?
Um, I'm, uh, consistent. I'm deeply concerned about the whole issue, and I said I had no promise to make tonight, and, uh, it's not going to affect the steps the board are gonna take going forward in that story. Thanks.
Okay. Great. Um, all right. So we have, we don't have a consistent, uh, agreement on the part of the board, but I think we have enough who are all right. I have one, two, three, four, and myself, who would be all right, sending a letter, uh, just replying very simply, just yes, go ahead, begin working on the draft for an overlay district for the RPC. And, you know, that's really all we're agreeing to. So I think we have enough board members from the sense of the board that we can go ahead with that course of action. All right. So let's move on to our next agenda item. And that is the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, uh, zoning. And where we stand now, we do have, uh, members of the Cape Cod Commission connected. I think Sarah Kordjev is connected. And the draft that the Planning Board reviewed was also brought before a couple of other of the town committees. It was brought before the Zoning Board of Appeals and also before HBDC. And, uh, we received their comments. And Cape Cod Commission prepared a summary of the comments, a memo that we received. And I think Sarah would like to review those with the Planning Board. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, other members of the board. Uh, I have a very brief presentation for you tonight, which I hope you'll enjoy. Uh, and I'm going to share my screen so that you can follow along. Okay. So as you heard, as a first step in getting public comments on your draft zoning, proposed zoning for West Chatham Neighborhood Center, we were directed to make presentations to the Historic Business District Commission and to the Zoning Board of Appeals to help them understand the proposal and then gather comments from them. So going in chronological order, I'm gonna start with, um, the Historic Business District Commission. And I'll start, uh, with the fact that they, in general, were, uh, very supportive of the draft zoning, recognizing that it is consistent with the goals of the Historic Business District Commission, bringing buildings closer to the road, following a more traditional pattern of development and shielding parking more to the rear. Uh, but more specifically, they had a number of comments. Uh, one was defining the half-story. Uh, you may remember that in the zoning proposed, um, there's, the Planning Board is considering allowing two and a half stories as a maximum building height if affordable housing is considered in the proposal. Also, they recommended, uh, a reduced dormer setback, um, from the front wall of the building. They did express some concern about being too prescriptive in dimensional requirements for the buildings, uh, because they thought that could lead to developments that all looked the same. And we recognized that in West Chatham, the Historic Business District Commission would have review authority over the design of projects. So I think there's, um, some belief that, that, uh, their review authority can help to make sure that the designs of, of any proposed projects would be appropriate for the area. Um, in response to a key question that the Planning Board had about the maximum facade width of, of buildings that might be newly developed in the area, they seemed comfortable with the idea of the 75-foot overall facade width, noting that there are some examples of longer facades that have distinct elements pushed and pulled sort of, um, at different distances from the road frontage, and that they can be successful. And they also, um, generally supported the idea of allowing greater density to encourage mixed-use and affordable housing where appropriate. And then going on to the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, they addressed, uh, the proposal in general also, and noted a few things, um, that they felt that workforce housing was a really significant issue townwide, and that that should be addressed in this zone also. Um, they also noted the need for receiving comments from both the general public and from property owners in the area. But they made some more specific comments and suggested, and suggestions, including, um, perhaps putting together a table that would compare the existing zoning provisions with the proposed provisions to make it a little easier for members of the public to understand the differences. Also, um, they had some questions about whether the draft zoning is more or less flexible than the current zoning. So that might be another talking point to provide to the public. And looking at the issue of how the draft boundaries of the district were established, and whether or not it should include properties on the north side of Route 28. They did, uh, voice support for encouraging different types of housing within the district, including workforce housing. And they did also suggest allowing flexibility in the first floor of any mixed-use developments, uh, recognizing that it's important to have commercial development facing Route 28, but that it may be appropriate to allow the greatest amount of flexibility in the rear portions of the building, perhaps allowing residential on the first floor there. And finally, they did also suggest, uh, that they might, that it might be appropriate to address electric vehicle charging stations in the zoning. Um, the Zoning Board of Appeals, I should also notice, note, did allow public comment in their meeting. Uh, many of the comments received were related to the airport, but also there were comments about allowing workforce housing in the area and addressing the issue of carrying capacity when considering the appropriate density for West Chatham. Um, so based on, based on those comments from the two boards, uh, I would suggest that the, the Planning Board could go forward without making any changes to the proposed zoning, and instead, uh, bring it to the general public and, uh, decide after hearing comments from the public what changes you'd like to make. But of course, you could also go forward with any minor, um, corrections based on those comments from those two town boards. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. This is Catherine. So why don't we go through the board? Um, I hear some echoes, so I'm just gonna ask everyone again to mute your microphones if you're not speaking. And we'll go through the board. If you have questions for Sarah on any of the comments that came from HBDC or ZBA, and also if we can get a sense of what your feeling is, would you, uh, want to go ahead, as Sarah has suggested, and present the draft to the public as it stands, uh, not necessarily integrating yet these comments. Uh, not necessarily integrating yet these comments from these other boards. But then do the integration with the public comments as well as HBDC and ZBA, just do the integration of all the comments altogether. And just a reminder to the board that what we're planning, what we hope to do is at our next Planning Board meeting on December thirteenth is to do the first public community forum on the draft uh for West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So we are looking to do that on December thirteenth. So with that being said, let's go ahead with comments and questions. Art Spru.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see a reason why we had, we should be making adjustments now. I didn't see any significant uh statements by the two, two boards that we actually came before. I was uh present at those with uh, with Catherine and Katie. And uh, I think the one thing that could be helpful is what the ZBA suggested is doing a, a table comparing the existing zoning provisions with the proposed provisions. In my past life, uh, when I uh put together a village center zoning in my prior community, um when we did the comparison, it was uh striking how uh that affected the public's decision about we've got to change what we have because uh, that's not what we're looking for for a village center. And I think that's really the main point of what we're trying to do here is, is actually present something that creates a more form of a village center versus uh, the current uh type of zoning. And I think if we do that comparison, and that's probably the only thing I think we really need to do before we uh take this any further um and use that as, as a good vehicle to communicate with the public about this is what we have, this is what we're posing. People can get an idea is uh item five. Well, let's keep the old one because the new one is not quite right or vice versa. So that's my point of view. I'm, I'm anxious to see what happens on the thirteenth.
Great. Thank you, Arthur. Uh, Tom Gagin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin. Um, I was very pleased by the comments from the other boards. Uh, very appropriate. Uh, I find it interesting. I, I hadn't thought about whether this board should talk about, and as Arthur has pointed out, it may be too late in the process. But is there any value in extending uh the West Chatham zoning on the north side? What is there that would benefit from that? Again, if it is a discussion that the board would like to have about the boundaries for uh West Chatham Neighborhood Village, I certainly would entertain that. Uh, other than that, I thought that the comments were very well, were very well received by me and very much appreciated.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Warren Chain.
Yeah, this is Warren Chain. Um, I echo that comment, the definition of the boundary that the neighborhood center predates my involvement with the board. Um, but certainly as I drive down twenty-eight, there are many properties on the north side um that seem to me would be ideal to have uh within uh the neighborhood center. So that dialogue, if it is appropriate and not likely to add additional complexity to the um, to the situation, I, I certainly would endorse it. As for going forward for the next meeting, um, um, I guess I would go along with that because I wish to move forward on this, but um, it seems to me, my recollection from the last time we reviewed the draft was there were a large number of issues that were um up for discussion without conclusion, which I would have thought would have uh been reflected in a revised draft, things such as, you know, what the proposed density would be, uh, what what uh the number of uh uh, of, of bedrooms, living units or whatever per, per building might be. Uh, questions with effect to parking uh and setbacks and whether we would be encouraging or discouraging the use of crossing between parking areas rather than going out onto twenty-twenty-eight. I mean, it goes on and on. If I go back to my notes, the things that it seems to me that the board collectively was suggesting needed to be clarified or changed or tweaked. Uh, we had a long discussion about the appropriate maximum width of uh the facade, seventy-five feet, some would have said fifty. Not sure where we came out on that. We, and the discussion about two and a half story dwellings uh being appropriate and whether we should be talking about limiting bedrooms or um, on and on. So I would have, I was expecting to see a new draft. It would including uh tweaking the preamble, which would make it uh as clear as we possibly can that this board is responding to the explicit expressed desires of the town in various documents, including its uh master plan with respect to its goals and objectives to meet the needs of the community. Uh, we're not out following new ground here and um uh, I certainly felt that the, the attempt to do that in the draft that I had seen most recently still could benefit uh in terms of its impact on those who would be reading this for the first time. So at any rate, I was surprised that we didn't have a new draft that addressed many of the issues we discussed previously, but I'd certainly be in favor of going forward to have uh public comment sooner rather than later, I suppose.
Okay, uh, thank you, Warren. And Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, I think things are going well with the, the whole concept of the West Chatham Village Center. And, and I look forward to seeing what's coming down the pike in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Bob, Bob Wertschafter.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty much, I'm ready to go, go forward. I, I don't know that all those things that Warren mentioned uh need to be uh incorporated into, to the, to the plan. So, but, but there are a few, so there clearly we're not done yet, but we, we're ready to present it to the, to the public.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And Roger?
Uh, yeah, not, not much. Sarah, thank you and to everyone at the commission for all your effort on our behalf. And uh other than that, I think we are more than ready to probably present what we have so far. And I think that would be I don't think we need to make any changes. Just get it out there, get some opinions and we can go to the next step.
Great. Thank you, Roger. This is Catherine. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Again, thank you, Sarah. Um, and everyone at Cape Cod Commission for summarizing the comments from the two boards. I think it was very well done. I just wanted to say, having attended both meetings, that I was very pleased because I felt in general the reception to the whole idea of West Chatham zoning and the overall draft was really very positive from both committees. And especially HBDC, um, they were uh very favorable about using form-based code and felt that in general, uh, rezoning West Chatham in this way would really help to create the type of aesthetic and living conditions that, that we envisioned there. Um, and that would be more compatible with the neighborhood center. So I thought overall, the response was very positive from both uh boards. I also wanted to address Warren's concerns. It is true uh that we did leave a lot of unanswered questions in the draft. But as I recall, we did that deliberately, that the board uh either agreed or we even might have formally voted that we would leave those issues as open issues and go forward and get more input from other boards and committees and from the public before we made our final determination about those open issues. So Warren, you're absolutely correct. There's a lot of open issues. But as I remember, we agreed to go forward, get more input and then resolve those issues. I would actually like to, I think it's ready to go forward to the public. I think we should present the draft as is to the public. Maybe include um a short version of this memorandum about other points that have come up from other committees at the end so that the public can see those. Maybe with some editing. I think it would be very helpful uh if it can be done before December thirteenth to create this table comparing existing zoning provisions with the proposed provisions in the draft as it stands now. I think that would be really helpful for the public as well as for the board. And if there's a way that we can answer this question, is the draft zoning more or less flexible than the current zoning? I, I mean, it's a kind of a um, a judgment call. Um, what do we mean by flexible? So, but if we can you know, I would ask Sarah for your help on that and Katie and Ally to answer those questions and prepare that table. I think it might be helpful to have those for December thirteenth. I'm going to make a couple of comments about what a couple of people have brought up about the boundaries of the neighborhood center, just having been involved in this process. Since the comprehensive plan in two thousand and three, the comprehensive plan, I think, defines the boundaries for West Chatham, actually including some of those properties on the north. But when we did the visioning study in two thousand and thirteen and the subsequent um meetings with the residents of West Chatham, et cetera, et cetera. It was the wish of the uh community to exclude those uh bound, those properties on the north. So it changed. Uh, and the boundaries that you were presented with were the preferred boundaries of the community at that time. The reason those properties on the north are excluded is that they are residentially zoned and they are privately, obviously privately owned. And it was our understanding that the property owners um own them as a family and in perpetuity and have no desire, you know, will not be redeveloping them. And so there were a number of issues regarding those uh properties on the north that came up from the residents of the area. And that's why those boundaries were changed. It doesn't mean we can't open the question again and ask those questions again and see if they could be included uh in the West Chatham Neighborhood zoning. So you know, we, we could ask that question again. So those were all my comments. But I do think we should just go forward and bring this before the public on December thirteenth and get more input. And then think about how we want to integrate that input and resolve some of the open issues uh that are still in the draft. And I do see a hand raised. Um, let me just check. So I see Elaine Gibbs has her hand raised. Um, please go ahead, Elaine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, I was at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, and I have to say with all due respect, I had a totally different takeaway. There were a lot of questions by the ZBA. They did not understand a lot of it. They had dozens of questions. Some people didn't know why it was even happening. They were very, very confused by it. They didn't know what their role was supposed to be, what the role of the Planning Board was supposed to be, and they thought it was very undeveloped. They did say that they couldn't understand the, the footprint as to why there was no development on the north side. Uh, I don't think this is ready for the public. I think that what you should do is, I don't know how you can take it to the public and show them this and show all the development near the airport within the RPZ when you can't do it. The FAA says you can't do it. I think it's disingenuous and they're going to be confused. The cleanest way to do it is for you to make that part of the underlying bylaw that you can't build there and then expand the district on the north side to the east and go a little bit further to the east past the Buckley property. The, the, the owners would still be grandfathered, I believe, that they could still keep their homes. They don't have to do anything. It's only if the property sells and somebody wants to do something else with it. And I never knew that you could just go and poll people when you're doing a zoning bylaw in a district, and then if they say, no, we don't want it, that you actually do spot zoning and, and you know, go around and pick and choose. I think a lot of people in that district, if they knew they had that option, would have said no. I can think of maybe three or four people that would have wanted to opt out. I don't think they were asked. So I would hope that if you really wanted to pass, you got to address the airport issue first. And the cleanest way to do it is the land you lose there for development, you pick up going further east on the north and the south along Route twenty-eight. And I think then you would have a good chance of having it pass. Uh, but I think this is very messy right now. And, and again, I think it's really disingenuous to go ahead and say you're going to have increased development within a runway protection zone where the FAA says it is not safe. And they don't permit it. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. And I see also Gloria Freeman has her hand raised. Ms. Freeman, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd suggest that your Planning Board members watch the Zoning Board of Appeals, I think it was the November fourth meeting, and listen to the comments that ZBA members made from a question as to how the business owners in the area feel about the plans and that that should have happened earlier. To concerns by several ZBA members that this zoning proposal is really not necessary. There were many other concerns as well from ZBA members as well as citizens. So uh unfortunately, uh with all due respect to Ms. Kordjev, I do not believe that the list is anywhere near complete and that your Planning Board members really need to hear what the Zoning Board of Appeals actually said. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. I also see Paula Lofgren has her hand raised. And again, just a reminder to mute your microphones if you're not speaking. Paula Lofgren.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, for the opportunity to ask some, some questions, concerns. Um, regardless of the, the RPZ, the development plan for West Chatham, a good portion of it is either directly under or adjacent to the approach path to the airport. And time again, members of the Airport Commission, as well as some of the public, have denounced concerned residents for building or purchasing homes in the flight path. And I wonder if the Airport Commission feels the same way about the West Chatham Neighborhood Plan, which seems to be doing exactly the same thing, which is building within the flight path. The West Chatham Plan shows all manner of, manner of building requirements, but I've not noticed any discussion about the people for whom this development is designed. To whom will you be marketing these businesses and, and residents so close to the airport? Will there be full disclosure of the operations at the airport? And what are the plans for this disclosure for perspect- prospective tenants and owners? Will they be shown a video with the sound turned up to the max of the Pilatus coming in for a landing? Will anyone, especially families with young children, want to live under the final approach um of the definite turboprops? Will they choose to subject themselves and their families to the possible health implications that come from the excessively loud noise and the fumes of jet fuel? And lastly, will the prospective owners and tenants be told that the smaller planes that are constantly taking off and landing burn litted fuel? Add gases, one hundred octane low lead. There's no acceptable level of lead in humans, um, especially for children. And will anyone be willing to accept this potential risk as um, as a tenant, um, resident or business owner? So once again, thank you for the opportunity um to ask those questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lofgren. Are there any other questions or comments, either from the board or from the public? I did see an raise.
Yeah, me, Madam Chair.
Peter Kokolas, yes, Peter Kokolas, please go ahead.
This has been an interesting evening. Uh, I'm, I'm going to speak as a former, I'm going to speak as a former uh Planning Board member. Uh, and back to the, the, the discussion on the northern part of the uh, the, the northern part of West Chatham. There's a, there's a long history there. I'll try to be short. That area that's, that you see where the, the major cut is, which is uh kind of where uh the uh habitat for humidity houses and so forth, that was originally an overlay district. It was an overlay district that allowed for uh a considerable amount of density. The only piece of property that, that is left that was grandfathered to that was where the proposed uh, uh COA property is. Once that, that was taken off Once that, that was taken off by a citizen's petition and it was approved, when we started working with the citizen's petition on where you wanted to go, it was easier, and this is my opinion, it was easier to stay with the existing GB3 district. And that was what we ended up with as the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. The whole idea of putting the northern part on was, is, is not radical. Yeah, there were some pushback, but, but it was more had to do with what the overlay district was there and that when you, when you finally wanted to do something in West Chatham, it, we kept with the GB3 district. And I won't get into everything on the, the airport. All I can say is that, that the issues that were brought up on airplanes flying over and all that is a discussion you should have later on. The, the overlay dish that, that is proposed is just a normal way to do business. That's your responsibility. It comes to you in, in any way, anyway. And anyway, that overlay district's been here since 1951. I had a deal with it when I was on the planning board and we were looking at what was involved. So now we have to, we as a town have to address it directly, but that's it, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. I just want to make one comment, I think just a couple of comments. This is Catherine. Just a reminder to the public that what we're looking at here is a proposal for a zoning bylaw amendment. The planning board will have no action or no involvement in the actual building or development of that area. That will be up to individual property owners and developers. So some of the issues that, and questions that were raised about will there be disclosure that there's an airport nearby, et cetera? That would be up to property owners and developers to make those determinations. What the planning board can do and what our job is, is to propose, basically to propose the legislation and to propose the zoning that will allow and encourage the type of development that is more favorable to a neighborhood center. And also just a reminder, since so many issues again have come up regarding the RPC that there is underlying zoning there right now. It's called GB3, which also allows for, would allow for if that area were to be redeveloped according to what's allowed in a GB3 zone, would also allow for significant, pretty dense redevelopment. And it allows for, so the West Chatham Neighborhood Center rezoning may not be so much the issue as the issue of providing the proper zoning for runway protection zone, whatever the underlying zoning may be. And that's what's being proposed in the overlay district. So I just wanted to make that comment that there is underlying zoning that does allow for significant development already. And that's GB3 and residential on the other side. So I'll just ask once more if there's any other comments or suggestions, questions. I do see Renee Haas. Renee Haas?
Yeah. Yes, Madam Chairman, I just have, you know, a few comments and, you know, I've been listening to the, the entire meeting. And I just do want to point out that there are strong misconceptions regarding the airport that have been created by, you know, a few individuals that are very passionately opposed to the airport itself and, and want to reduce activity. It should be known that aircraft were noisier in the past than they are today. Back in the 1960s, Chatham Airport was host to commercial aviation where twin-engine DC-3 aircraft with 95-foot wingspans, far larger than, than the Pilatus, you know, had scheduled service, you know, from Chatham to New York, I believe, and to Boston, a couple of places. So, you know, the, the notion that the future of the airport is noisier under proposals made by the commission is truly a misconception that can be corrected by looking at many things that have been written on, on the website. The airport plans in place, even though it's counterintuitive that a lower ceiling would be safer, has to do with the method of approach and the use of GPS equipment that if you, if you just do the research, all aircraft research says that these approaches are far safer and quieter than what is in place today. So I'm not trying to say that aircraft are not noisy. This, you know, definitely true, but in the past, the twin-engine aircraft, you know, that were more prevalent, that had twin, you know, piston, very high-powered piston engines were more noisy than the Pilatus, which has, you know, which is the aircraft that seems to be in the target zone for folks who are, you know, perhaps afraid because it's a larger aircraft. Its safety record is absolutely impeccable. But, you know, of course, it, you know, it's noisy. It's not as noisy as some twins in the, in the 70s, 80s, and 90s. I'd just like to say that overall traffic, I started flying in Chatham in 1992 where I got my, you know, my pilot's license, you know, I, I start, I soloed there. And the airport was far noisier and far busier than it is today. You know, aviation, general aviation is down. Chatham has never been a punky little, you know, old hobbyist type aircraft. It's always been a very busy place. And frankly, it had some extremely noisy aircraft. There were warbirds that flew out of Chatham, you know, quite regularly. And, and so just to be known or put in context that there's a great deal of misconception that has been spread by some folks who are very passionately would like to restrict the aviation rather than actually, you know, keep it as it is. So thank you for listening and I appreciate your, your, your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haas. So if there's no further discussion on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, we'll just move on to chairman's comments. Really, my only comment is just about our December 13th meeting. It does look like the board agrees that we should, we should at least make a public presentation of the draft of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning. And so there is a question, could we start the meeting earlier? So I think what we'll do is ask you to be in touch with Ally whether you could start the December 13th meeting at 4 o'clock so that we can accommodate a public forum on the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So I'll just ask if there's any further comments, and if not, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Bob Dubus, move to adjourn.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
Art Spru, a second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Thank you. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Bob Wertschfter?
Bob Wertschfter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Helfer, and I approve that we adjourn tonight's meeting and we will note the time as 8:34. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. And please enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you all.